School Board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The December 12th, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School Board system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and they are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, is absent. Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Dr. Jonathan Grantham, Deputy Superintendent, Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Kevin Christian, TV Media Production, Public Relations Officer, will be providing inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, everyone, and Merry Christmas. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, all. We have a treat for you this evening. We have a parent and a student with us this evening to tell us a little bit about a new initiative we have that is called MyOn. That's little M, little Y, capital O, capital N. And it's all about reading. So I'm going to introduce Tina Allen and her daughter Danny. We reserved seats on the front row just for them. Come on up here, we want you to be on camera with us. Come on up here, Dr. Grantham, this is about you, too. Tina, give us an idea of what you've experienced with MyOn so far.
Well, Ms. Danny here, she doesn't have a lot of patience for reading. It's, she has a hard time keeping her attention span. But with MyOn, she found books that read to her. And that's, that's, it holds her attention. It's, she's not having to do all the work and she's passing her AR tests with these books and she's just excited.
Danny, what do you think about MyOn?
Very shy.
She's had a loss for words. We have a brief, two-minute video that I'd like to share with you and then Dr. Grantham can share some final thoughts about how this is going to impact our district, not just throughout the year, but particularly after next Tuesday.
Hi. I would like to tell you about MyOn and why I think it is really great. MyOn is an individualized, interest-based, digital reading platform that allows students like me to enjoy reading anywhere there is Wi-Fi and at almost any time. I can read from my computer at school or my iPad at home. Free mobile apps allow me to download up to twenty titles at a time for offline reading. I simply use my Marion County Public School credentials to log in and gain access to over thirteen thousand digital texts from Capstone and other respected publishers, including daily news articles. Seventy percent of the texts are nonfiction and thirty percent fiction. MyOn takes note of my personal reading preferences and generates recommendations based upon them. MyOn is especially helpful in keeping me in the reading groove when there are extended breaks from school. I can take ownership of my reading growth by managing preferences and utilizing writing tools that support literacy from my very own dashboard. MyOn also enables me to read with my parents at home. Included audio narration helps model fluency and the highlighted text and embedded dictionaries increase my vocabulary. All of these things help me to continue to develop and nurture my love of reading.
I think it goes back to the notion of it's cultivating that genuine love for literacy. It is a platform that is not going to be defined by points or by prizes. It's really cultivating that intrinsic motivation that we're genuinely instilling that love of reading for all students. And it's really about accessibility and equity as well. All students have accessibility to this platform regardless of where they are, as long as they have Wi-Fi within means. But it's a notion that it's, it's a collective set of high-quality texts that we can ensure that are in the hands or in the devices of every single child.
So as we conclude, we want to tell our parents and our students, this is the season for MyOn, so students, please, I don't know where we're looking at, please use MyOn. This was a, my son, my first grader, Tate, now he's in second grade, this is what got Tate reading. This is what got him excited for reading. We gave him an iPad and he just went through it over and over and over again. So when there's time at home, we encourage the parents and students to read and check out MyOn. And we thank you for coming. And I'm speeches at board meetings, too, so I understand. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Grantham. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Before we have the approval of our agenda, Dr. Mayer has asked for some time, so I will defer to you. Thank you. I appreciate this. This weekend, I used some time over the weekend, I used a lot of time over the weekend, to reflect on the discussion that we had last Thursday about trust. Now, trust is certainly a two-way street and we've experienced issues of trust in both directions. However, I've not made public statements about this and I prefer to keep my concerns addressed in a private and less politically charged setting. But I wanted to just share tonight so we can then move forward. My trust issues relate to my strong beliefs that personal politics may be overshadowing concern for our students with some of you. But this said, I repeat the commitment that I made to all of you last week, that my administration and myself will do a much better job of keeping you all informed on issues that are key to accomplishing your responsibilities as board members. At the same time, though, I, I can't, I won't cave in to attempts to bully or intimidate me publicly or with emails related to my personal and/or non-job-related life, and that won't work. But instead, I propose that we move forward and we call a truce this evening on the current conflict and we start this new year and we begin the season of miracles that starts tonight with a new beginning and working together. As you have your responsibilities as board members, I also have responsibilities as the elected superintendent. And I want us to start working as partners and not combatants for the good of our students. And I ask you to accept my request and I thank you for this time. I look forward to continuing to make our, our district great for our students. With the exception of items 8.1 and C11.3, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for December 12th, 2017, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recorded included as part of the official record of the meeting. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion passed for zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 24th, 2017, school board meeting?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a rat sign.
Okay, so you vote.
Motion passed for zero. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, CFO, Business Services, and Ms. Kristin Corrigan, Internal Auditor, please come forward and introduce the individuals to be recognized for excellence in bookkeeping.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Chulley. It is an honor. I love these happy moments, to borrow a phrase of Dr. Mayer, when we recognize those who work behind the scenes and make things happen. So I'll defer to Christine, because I'll be back up to talk to you a little bit later about something that's not so super exciting, just the budget. But I'll defer this to Christine to introduce our awardees for this evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayor and Board Members. Each of these schools have achieved what we call a perfect audit. A perfect audit consists of having no findings for their school year, which means that they met all of our Red Book requirements, our Florida statutes, and all of our school board policies that we have put in place. The certificate that they're receiving tonight says, "Award of Bookkeeping Excellence Presented in Recognition of Achieving Audit with No Findings for the, either the 14, 15, or 15, 16 school year." It is signed by Dr. Heidi Mayer and our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis. I would like to call up the principal for Ocala Springs Elementary during the 14, 15 school year, Ms. Tracy Crawford. The current principal, Ms. Cassandra Boston, and the secretary, Ms. Beth Falk. Beth has done a great job at Ocala Springs, working with her teachers. She had almost five hundred monies collected forms come in and not one was turned in late nor had any alterations on them which needed information from the teachers. Thank you for doing such a great job. Ms. Crawford?
Well, I talked to Mrs. Falk earlier today and I, I said, "Well, what, what should I say?" And she gave me my short speech and it was, she is dedicated and she is, she is so dedicated at what she does. She wears many hats. So sometimes she's the peacekeeper, sometimes she's the door greeter, sometimes she consoles teachers, sometimes she consoles children, she rallies for our school at that time and still is rallying for it to be number one. So I appreciate her in keeping us all in line with the finances and keeping everything straight. She, she is very dedicated. So thank you so much, Mrs. Falk.
We'll get a picture at the end.
I'd like to call up the principal at Shady Hill Elementary during the 14, 15 school year, Mr. Ryan Bennett. The current principal, Ms. Deb Riedel, and the secretary during the 14, 15 school year, Ms. Jennifer Whiting. During the 14, 15 school year, Jennifer did an amazing job working with her staff through various ways. She collected almost seven hundred monies collected form and processed twenty-two receipt books with no errors. Thank you for the great work that you did at Shady Hill. Mr. Bennett?
What can I say? All I can say is Jennifer Whiting is an amazing person, but an outstanding secretary-bookkeeper. The finance department's in good hands now because she's now there. So I'm sure you see that every day, right? Yes. But I think what Tracy Crawford says, the same thing, is that dedication to the job, but actually the dedication to the school, the students, the teachers, the community. It's not just the bookkeeping. So thank you very much and you're missed.
And then last, but never at least, I'd like to call up the principal at Maplewood Elementary during the 14, 15 school year, and Ms. Laura Burgess. The current principal, Mr. Lamar Rembert, and their secretary, Ms. Lori Raybold. We are pleased to tell you that Maple Elementary had a perfect audit for both 14, 15, and 15, 16 school year, which is a great accomplishment. Lori also does a great job with her staff, keeping, working closely with them. She has created a great system there where she's reduced her reimbursements down to less than five percent of all of the checks that she cuts, using a lot of vendors, which we appreciate. Saying that, congratulations and thank you for everything that you've done at Maplewood. And Ms. Burgess?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent and School Board Members. I just have to say that Mrs. Raybold is Maplewood Elementary School. She's been there since the first day the school opened and has moved up from a parent to a para to the secretary for the last twenty-one years. She's the heart and the soul of Maplewood and we always say, "She bleeds blue." So nobody is more deserving. Attention to detail and persistence, she basically is the heart of our school. Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity tonight to recognize them for their great work. And thank you, Kevin, for your great certificates that you do for us.
If you guys will come to the center, I'd like to get a group shot. And they all run.
Thank you all very much. Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, would like to recognize Century Link for their generous donation.
Good evening, friends, and thank you Chairman McCall and Dr. Mayer for allowing us time on your agenda this evening. I am here to happily introduce you to some other friends of ours. Well, now I'm going to get my little notes out here. Now, you know, the mission of the Public Education Foundation is to financially, financially and materially support Marion County Public Schools, its students and teachers. And we could not do that if it were not for our donors, our sponsors, and our volunteers that make our work possible. So this evening with me, I have Deborah Rios Barnes from Century Link. I have Patty Schiefer, also from Century Link, and a Public Education Foundation Board Member. And Patricia Wallace is joining us this evening. So Century Link has been a friend of the foundation for quite some time. They are a business partner with MTI. And as well as I mentioned, Patty is now a board member and has served on several foundation committees. However, this year, Century Link has also sponsored the foundation ten thousand dollars. And that money is being used to sponsor School Related Employee of the Year, Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Gala, Snickers and Smores 5K for Take Stock in Children, and the Take Stock in Children Senior Night, where they'll also be awarding a five hundred dollar STEM scholarship to one of our Take Stock graduates. So we are thrilled to be able to, to introduce them to you and to share with you this wonderful partnership. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Rios Barnes to say a few words.
Good evening. It's really an honor to be here tonight. Century Link strives to improve the lives of our customers by connecting them to the digital world. We could all agree that high-speed internet is no longer just something that is nice to have. It's imperative for the academic success of our students, as was evident with the MyOn program. We understand and recognize how important technology is and the role that it plays. So this is why we partner with excellent organizations such as the foundation. We also, last year, we granted or awarded one point four million dollars to our Teacher and Technologies Program. I am happy to announce that we have that program here in Marion County and it is an application process, that the applications are due through January 12th. And Judy has been gracious enough to send it out to all the deserving teachers here in Marion County, so I look forward to coming back in April and hopefully awarding some scholarship to teachers right here in Marion County. On behalf of myself and my colleagues from Century Link, thank you for all you do and have a wonderful evening.
Deborah, I have something for you on behalf of the foundation, just to say thank you for your support and helping us with the work that we do. Thank you very much. I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy First Day of Hanukkah to those that celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Century Link, for all you do. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, CFO, Business Services, is here to provide the board with an update on her recent attendance at the Fall Florida School Finance Officers Association Conference.
It's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Good evening again. I attended the Florida School Finance Officers Conference the second week of November. And when I got back, I was so excited about all the things that I learned, I was having a conversation with Dr. Mayer and she suggested that I share those comments with you. You also attended your meeting a couple of weeks ago and it would probably, hopefully, we're, we're hearing the same things and comparing notes. So I just want to take a few minutes and go through some of the highlights. So as a part of the Florida School Finance Officers, we also have something called the Finance Council. And that is made up of twenty-one districts of various sizes. You can see, we have five small districts, six medium-sized, and seven large districts. So we strive to find issues that we can agree on and that would benefit all sixty-seven counties. This organization has been around for many, many years and has been very instrumental in providing documentation and providing information to the Department of Education. And they reach out to us and accept our ideas and sometimes they include them in their budgets and that we've seen that over the years. So we meet four times a year. And again, as I said, we talk about a lot of issues that are financial in nature, but also impact other classrooms. A part of the agenda of the Finance Council is to come up with what we believe are priorities for our sixty-seven counties. And every year, we provide these priorities to the State Board as well as anyone else who will listen. And I wanted to share these three priorities. The very first one is maintaining the required local effort. And basically, what has happened over the past two years, as, as our property values increase, you will see that the required local effort has decreased. So it's offsetting that natural growth that would provide additional local dollars. So our request is to allow that to happen normally and naturally. And we hope that you agree with that as well. If we had done that in 15, 16, we would have had additional eight hundred thousand dollars. If we had had a required local effort that went along with the property values in 16, 17, we would have had an additional one point five million dollars. So this isn't just little dollars. These are, I like to equate everything to the number of teachers that we could have hired. So if you think about it that way, that, that is a large dollar amount for our district. Our second priority that we submitted to the State Board was to restore the local capital outlay millage back to two point oh mills. Remember, eight, nine years ago, it was reduced to one point seven five mill and then the next year, it was reduced to one point five mill. So over that time, we have not generated seventy-three million dollars. So how many HVACs could we have fixed? How many electrical systems could have been prepared? And just to remind you, we do have a five-year capital plan that's over five hundred million dollars worth of needs that our district has, just to maintain the, the buildings that we have here. The third item is to increase teacher salaries. Get rid of all of the best and brightest, this, best and brightest that, and just infuse the budget with enough money so that we can support our teachers, who we are saying are very critical to not only our state, but our nation. So we're asking them to look at that. They did that, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, put in dollar amounts for, for increases in teacher salaries. It went along for two years and then all of a sudden, it got rolled into the base student allocation, basically lost. So we're asking them to look at that as well. So there's lots and lots of issues out there, but these were the three priorities that the twenty-one school districts agreed on. So let's take a look at the commissioner's budget, or what we refer to as the State Board budget. It's interesting that their budgets are about the same, but what they are choosing to include in the budget is just a little bit different. So the State Board's budget is, is requesting seven hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. Basically, that'll cover what they call workload and that is a projected twenty-seven thousand additional students. They're projecting that we're going to pick up twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand additional students in eighteen, nineteen. Also, the State Board's budget is submitting an increase, first, excuse me, the budget is being submitted for safe schools to be increased by ten million. So that's been an issue we've harped on for many, many years. Our safe schools allocation has just slowly increased over the years. And right now, we are paying out over one point two million dollars for resource officers when our allocation is less than nine hundred thousand dollars. So the district is having to pick up that additional and you will see that in every district across the state of Florida. The last item, which is very interesting to me, is that the State Board is requesting an increase in transportation. We haven't seen that in a long time, right, Ms. Laura? It's been a long time since we've seen that and that would be a substantial increase for transportation, especially for school districts like ours that, you know, living in a district that's the size of Rhode Island and the hundreds and hundreds of miles that our buses drive every day. So this increase that the State Board is submitting is about two point seven four percent, which equates to about two hundred dollars per student. And of this budget, of this budget of seven hundred and sixty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-four would come from the local. And how would we get that from the local taxes? They're projecting a tax roll increase of six point one four percent. So this is an average over the state of Florida. So they're projecting that the tax rolls would increase six point one four percent, meaning that the values are going to go up. So if we maintain our required local effort, we would have an increase in revenue just from that source. So let's look at the governor's budget. The same increase, seven hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. But what their, the components of their budget is for the twenty-seven thousand students. They're also asking for an increase in safe schools dollars. They want to increase the classroom teacher supply assistance. That's our teacher lead dollars that we give to the teachers for supplies outside of the allocation that they receive from their principals. The governor wants to increase that. But he's also providing a small increase for the base student allocation. And if you recall, the base student allocation is money that we can use in any facet. It's not a categorical, so tho, that's a good item as well. Again, the same thing, there's a two point seven four percent increase, which represents two hundred dollars per unweighted FTE. And the majority of this increase is due to the tax roll. FTE. And the majority of this increase is due to the tax rolls increasing and the required local effort remaining the same. I think, I know, because we listened to Jim Hamilton on, I think their new name is Rutledge, we listened to him yesterday. He feels like the Senate is going to support the Governor's Budget, but we have a hard hill to climb with the House. If we maintain this budget and the required local effort is not increased, we are looking at less than 1% increase. And our health insurance would eat that up. That's just Teresa saying that. And so someone asked me, I think it was Dr. Grantham, he asked me, "Well, this is an election year. Don't, you know, they typically become generous during election year." And yes, they are, but Jim Hamilton does not believe that we will see that generosity in 1819. And basically, because of the things that have happened in our state with the hurricane and the impact of the hurricane really eating into the reserves that were available. And speaking of hurricanes, this are, these are some of the items that we considered that were challenges that are facing all school districts. And it was the three hurricanes, Irma, Maria, and Nate. And believe it or not, of the 67 counties, there was only a handful that were not impacted by these hurricanes. And I don't know that that's ever happened before, in some form or fashion, with the loss of utilities, with housing, all the folks that were leaving from down south. So those expenses, we are still looking to recoup from FEMA. So that was a concern with all of the districts. How much are we going to get reimbursed for? How long is it going to take? I think we recently received money from a hurricane that was probably about eight or nine years ago. So it's an arduous process, and we are looking into getting some assistance, and you're voting on something tonight that will hopefully help us gather that information, get it into FEMA early, and then having a positive outcome. The last item that I want to talk about as a current challenge on this page is just displaced students. I was shocked to learn that Osceola, by themselves, had over 1,000 new students. This is an issue for us. We have not seen the impact yet, because typically, if we appropriated money and we have something like this happen, or some other catastrophe, whether the economy goes tank, what happens is they come back and prorate the revenue that was allocated to all school districts. But as of yet, that has not happened, but we are still recovering from the hurricane and paying bills that are associated with that. So we have to keep our eyes out looking to make sure that we are proactive in ensuring that we don't lose any additional money due to the additional cost for hurricane expenditures. And one of our favorite House bills, 7069, after the dust settled and everyone started talking about it, one of the main issues that a lot of the districts that predominantly in Central Florida and South Florida had to do with charter schools. Now, we only have two charter schools right now that are eligible, because they have to have the grade, and they have to have met certain other expectations to be eligible. So the impact for us right now is minimal, but it, what happens is we have to share the 1.5 mil, which has not been done. But we only have two schools. So for us, it's not a huge dollar amount, but it could potentially be if we allow other charter schools into our system that are larger, much larger. The next item is the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program. And as you recall, a couple of years ago, 6,000 was made available for those teachers who had met the criteria of the 80 percentile on their ACT and SAT scores. A new item that was added this year is that all teachers who are highly effective will receive $1,200, and teachers who are effective will receive up to $800. So once they've allocated out all the $1,200, whatever is left will be split between the districts. So at this point, we're not sure if all the teachers that are effective will get $800 or $100. We're hoping that it's closer to the eight. And also, a new item this year is the principal scholarship. This is a little bit more difficult. Not only does the school have to have a certain level of high-achieving teachers, but also the principal has to be at that particular facility for two years. And we had discussion about that, and it's, you know, we have principals that do a great job, we need to move them to another school that needs to, you know, give some gas to, so they can achieve as well. But by limiting this to a two-year stint, we're not sure how many of our teachers will be able to receive this scholarship. Other items of concern that were discussed were this whole idea of FTE recalibration. And without getting too involved in what it represents is, we only receive one FTE per student. But we have students who take, they may take six classes and take a Florida Virtual Class, or one of a Marion Virtual Class. We will not receive that additional FTE for that class. If we have students that are in Marion County for the first count and the second count, they may be somewhere else. We have to share that FTE. So it's very difficult for school districts to project what they believe the revenue is going to be, because the recalibrated FTE comes in, and it can be all over the place. So we just sort of watch and see what happens after October count, and try to judge February based on what happened at the October count. Another item that everyone expressed, and even Dr. Hamm talked about it, generators. That was a huge discussion, the generators that failed at shelters, and the need for the state to provide some kind of a revenue stream so that we can have the equipment. If their expectation is for us to host, you know, to host shelters, then there needs to be some kind of a revenue stream to make sure we have the equipment that is needed. Are there any questions? Try to be as quick as possible.
Any questions, Board?
No, I want to thank you, though.
Thank you. That's very good. And Florida School Board Association platform has a lot of the same priorities. So for the local effort, yes, for sure. So maybe we'll get something done.
Hopefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kendra Hamby, Director, Early Learning and Turnaround Schools, is here to share awards recently received by two of our schools.
Correct. Good evening, Superintendent Mayor, Madam Chair, and School Board Members. And I am honored to be here this evening to share some great news and present the National Blue Ribbon Schools for Academic Excellence Award and the flag for the 2016-17 school year to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School and Madison Street Academy of Visual and Performing Arts. Before making the recognitions, I just wanted to share with you about the process. The Florida Department of Education, along with other states across the nation, send in nominations of schools to the U.S. Department of Education. Nominees can represent both public and private schools through, elementary through high school. In January 2017, Dr. N.H. Jones and Madison Street Academy were nominated by the state of Florida as being exemplary schools and were invited to complete the application process. So it was an honor just to be nominated. Since I was the principal at Madison Street Academy during the time of nomination, I can attest that the application process was quite lengthy and time-consuming. However, I'm sure that Dr. Dewana Gary, the principal at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary, would agree with me that the time spent with her administrative team and with my administrative team was well worth this deserving, the accolades that the schools will receive. So I would like the principals, the current principals of both schools, and the assistant principals from 2016-17. So that would be Dr. Dewana Gary, Mr. Ryan Bennett, Ms. Ashley Kemp, and Mr. Lamar Rembert, who was the assistant principal at Madison Street Academy and now is the principal at Maplewood Elementary, to join me at the podium area. I was fortunate to attend the Blue Ribbon Schools Ceremony in Washington, D.C. on November 7, 2017. 342 schools representing our nation were recognized at this ceremony. I wanted to share one, what one of the speakers mentioned, the day of the ceremony, that resonated with me, and I also knew Mr. Rembert would like this illustration, because this speaker gave the illustration that oftentimes, youth have the dream of one day playing for the NFL, even though only 2% of the college players make it to that level. According to the statistics, it is seven times less likely for an elementary school to achieve this Blue Ribbon status. This is quite an achievement for Marion County Public Schools to have two schools receiving this prestigious honor. But the credit for the success of these two nationally-recognized Blue Ribbon Schools is certainly a team effort, and it's attributed to all the students, staff, parents, and community. And for that reason, I invited all the leadership teams, the staff, and the parent teams to be recognized. So that's where we're going to begin with Dr. N.H. Jones. So the Madison Street Academy people can sit down for a moment, because I want to make sure that they're all recognized, because like I said, it is a team effort. And I have to mention that, Dr. N.H. Jones, this is the second time they've received this Blue Ribbon national honor. The first, third time, okay. Well, the first time was... Thank you for correcting me. So both of them were underneath, the first two were under the leadership of Mr. Don Raymond, and then the third time, which is amazing, and under the leadership of Dr. Dewana Gary. Okay, all right. Well, anyway, I'm going to, Dr. Grantham's going to help with this, and I want to list and name off the people that represent Dr. N.H. Jones. So the current principal, Dewana Gary, the current assistant principal, who's at the school tonight, this evening, unfortunately unable to be here because they have a school event going on, and that's Jennifer Huell, and the 2016-17 assistant principal, Ashley Kemp, and the following people, if they would also come up, the parent community leadership team members, we have the content area specialist Cynthia Lewandowski, Janisha Nettles Brown, who is the student service manager, and the guidance counselor, Gwen Snead. And then we have the grade-level department chairpersons from the school.
Ms. Kendra, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, right in front of the school, because we've got lots of, because like I said, this is a team effort. It's just not one or two people. All of these people should be recognized. These were the department and grade-level chairpersons from 2016-17. Kindergarten, it was Stephanie Simon. First grade, Sarah Austin. Second grade, Molly Stewart. Third grade, Melinda Gebhardt. Fourth grade, Deborah Miller. Fifth grade, Michelle Danley. And special area, Melissa Hitchcock. We have the SAC president, Dr. Jody Wilson, and if any of those people are in the audience, please come on up. PTO president, Jennifer Eggers. And business partners, Dr. Siva, and with the Infectious Disease Associates of North Central Florida, and also Reed Orthodontics. We have those three business partners. So that is all the people at Dr. N.H. Jones. Please help me congratulate all of these people. That's true. I can attest to that. She's got her shirt from 2011 on, right? Congratulations. Okay, now I'd like to recognize the individuals from Madison Street Academy of Visual and Performing Arts. So we have the current principal, Ryan Bennett, and the current principal, or assistant principal, Megan Parks, and the assistant principal, and now the principal at Maplewood, Lamar Rembert, Angelique Hayworth, the content area specialist, Brett Mills, the student service manager, and the grade and department chairpersons. Kindergarten, Jessica Sissoni. First grade, Don Anderson. Second grade, Susannah Counts. Third grade, Natalie Swope. Fourth grade, Don Carpenter. Fifth grade, Carrie Lampersky. And I've seen you all in the back, so come on up here. So I know you're trying to hide back there in the back row. And special area department chairs, Amy Rowland, the media specialist, and Sheila Rotolo, dance instructor. And then our SAC president from 2016-17, I heard from her, she was, she had, she's relocated to North Carolina, but I know she'll be checking out this link this evening, and she'll be seeing this presentation, because she was very much an advocate of everything that we were doing at Madison Street. So hi, Emily Folk, thank you for your support. Kelly Ruiz, the PTA president. And business partners, Regions Bank, and Dr. Jones Orthodontics. So thank you all for all of your efforts. Like I said, it's a team effort, and this is quite an accomplishment. Okay. Thank you again, Superintendent Mayor, and Board Chair, and School Board Members, for allowing this time for us to celebrate these successes. Thank you.
Board, do you have any comments?
No.
Thank you all for all your hard work. Well done. Dr. Mayor, you have a presentation for us on college acceleration options and high school graduation rates.
Yes, and as the crowd transitions, thank you for this, because we appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward and to have this discussion, because there is some concern about what the college board represents. And there is founded issues with that, and we want to be very transparent about this. And it was, I think, serendipitous that, right after we agreed to have this presentation, that one of my, gentlemen, go ahead and come on up, so you can, you can take the stand there. One of my mentors, who is a superintendent in New York, Dr. Michael Hines, and he said he was going to try to watch tonight, but he is the superintendent in Patchego Medford School District, and he published an article on this exact subject, and he and I have had great conversation about it and what it means. The issues with the college board are nationwide, and some of it goes back to the CEO of the College Board, David Coleman, who was one of the authors of the Common Core Standards. And so that, his relationship during that time with Jason Zimba, who was also a co-author of the standards, and they went on to create the College Board, they have a monopoly on not only the College Board, but with AP courses, and that's where some of our rightful concern comes from. And if you think back to what Ms. Boston Ellis said, with part of best and brightest also is tied to ACT scores or SAT scores, and David Coleman is in charge of the SAT system too. So you see how this all kind of starts to combine. Now, with the SAT, the PSAT, and AP courses, we tend to think that that may be the only choice. And the gentlemen are here tonight to show that thankfully in our district, that's not the only choice that parents have, and that we have high expectations for all students, and we believe in opportunities for all students. We continue to say that you can't be what you can't see, and we are the lens for these kids. And our obligation is to all students, regardless of where they fall on their socioeconomic status or in their lifespan, and we have overwhelming support from those who advocate for those students. So tonight, we want to present the information to you on all our accelerated programs, and then move forward with your recommendation, as well as what families choose to have for their students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Ms. Chulley, and Mr. Gibbs. We are very excited to be here this evening to present to the Board information on the many college acceleration options that are available in our seven high schools. This presentation actually had its genesis from a Board question about fees associated with one of our acceleration programs at a recent work session. We gathered that information, but wanted to share the whole picture of the amount of choices that our high school students and their parents currently have. As the Board asked about funding, we have included that first, as well as statutory and student performance information. We have also included recent research on the benefits of college acceleration programs for all of our students. In this presentation, we will be using 2015-2016 data as FTE funding for 2016-2017. for 2016-2017 will not be awarded until the next FTE survey starting January, February. We hope to highlight the many choices that students at all of our high schools have, and their benefits to our students and their parents. With me this evening, I have Ben Whitehouse, our high school coordinator, and John McGowan, the Director of School Counseling and Assessment. John will start by updating us on the status of 2017 graduation rates.
Is it not working? Good evening, Board. Okay, as you can see, we have a blank slide for graduation rates. Our intent and our hope for tonight was to present to you 2016-17 graduation rates. As of today, they have not been released by the state. And not that DOE has officially said this, but my assumption is that that whole process has been pushed back due to the hurricane season. We are internally working with our high schools to review that data and make sure that any errors are corrected. We send that back to the state, and then they release that. We anticipate that information any day, hopefully before winter break, if not certainly soon after. In our review of the data so far, however, and I wanted to just take the opportunity to present to you tonight, that what we're seeing is we do anticipate a drop in our graduation rate from 15-16 to 16-17. When we looked at it a little bit more closely, and of course, there can be numerous reasons of why that could be, but one of the things that we've noticed is the new options that we have for our students, as we transition from last year to this year, and specifically speaking regarding Catapult Academy. And at the probably middle of last spring, when our district decided to, in our contract with Catapult, that was an option that a lot of our at-risk seniors, and students in general, high school students in general took, if they were not on track to graduate and provide another option for them. Once our district had decided to end that contract with them, and working through Mr. Vienello under his leadership and his team, to transition more of an advisement piece to the GED tests, an option tied with some vocational training as well. And I, I will speak to that just a second in terms of what Mr. Vienello has done. The GED, um, courses that are, you know, offered to prep for the GED exam, and the actual GED exam can be taken at multiple sites across the district now, not just at Marion Technical College. So the access to, for students to earn their GED is more readily available. And if students choose to go to Marion Technical College and pursue their GED coursework and take the test there, if they qualify, they do have the opportunity to participate in their vocational training. So we know at the end, that is what's best for our students. That instead of a student that we know that is not on track to graduate, and sending them to, you know, an option where they may or may not finish, if we send them through the GED and they're able to pass that and learn a skill that they can take right into the workforce, that benefits them and it benefits our community. With that being said, as we shift to that program of advisement, we have to be cognizant of the fact that that does impact our graduation rates. Under the uniform federal graduation rate, which is what the state of Florida uses, which is the, the strictest version of graduation rate our state has ever had, it only attributes graduates to a high school if they leave with a standard diploma. So whether they finish the four years at a high school or not, if they leave with anything other than a traditional standard diploma, it counts against the school in terms of their graduation rate. Now, we know there's many instances where a student, you know, whether it be GED or any other option that's available, that is what's best for the student, and that's what will be done. But we also have to keep in mind that as we kind of transition to that, we can expect, and I anticipate for last year's rates, to, you know, be lower than in previous years. So I wanted to just present that to you, that's what we're seeing now. There's nothing officially been released. As soon as it is, I'd be more than happy to come back to the Board and present a thorough, you know, overview of not only 16-17 graduation rates, but historical perspective as well.
Is the GED accepted by the military?
I believe in most cases it is, but I believe that it's a tiered system from what little I know of it. And there might, you know, I'm not sure on the details, but at least when I was a counselor, it was. But it, but I believe they have a tiered system to where, for job classification, it could impact that. But I'm, but I'm not 100% sure.
Would you, would you look into that and give me some information on that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're going to segue back to acceleration. We wanted to share some information with you about all the options at our schools, as I said earlier. This is a state statute that defines a high school's obligation to inform its students of acceleration opportunities. The next slide here has the information, beginning with the 2011-2012 school year. It was in state statute that says each high school must offer some kind of acceleration option. Wanted to share this with you too. You've probably seen this diagram from when John has come and done school grade, and myself have worked sessions before, but this is a school grade formula for high schools and for middle schools. And for high schools, you can see on the far right, acceleration success, and it tells, it tells you a little bit about how it's 10% of the school grades. On a scale of 1,000, it's 100 points. So 10% of our school grades in our high schools are tied to students having successful completions in acceleration options, not being in them, but having successful completions. And this is the actual language from DOE, from the school grading formula. And it tells, the 10% is figured by the number of students with at least one acceleration completion during their high school years. So in the past, the old school grade formula rewarded you for students having multiple acceleration. Now, basically, you, you only can get one point for those students, and they have to successfully complete. It's divided by the overall number of regular high school graduates with a regular diploma during that, in that class. In Marion County, students have a plethora of choices to choose from. And you can kind of see here that we have two ACE programs, two IB programs. Advanced Placement is at five of our schools. All of our students are able to do dual enrollment at the College of Central Florida. In addition, we have two early college sites in which students can take dual enrollment on the high school campus at Westport High School and at Dunellen High School. So we're going to start with IB. And you can kind of see here, IB, the International Backwater Program, is a pre-university course that meets the needs of highly motivated students, and they can earn up to 30 hours of college credit for completion of the IB diploma. And the key here is that for IB, and when we talk about ACE, students that complete the IB diploma automatically qualify for the highest level of the Bright Futures Scholarship, which if the legislation that's currently out there goes through, will end up going back to being 100% of their tuition. It has not been for the past few years, I think for the past seven, but there was a point, and that's, it's in the legislature, it's being proposed now, we'll see if it goes through, but I think it met its first hurdle. So those students would not have to meet the testing, meaning the ACT, SAT test, or the GPA requirement if they complete this rigorous program. So wanted to talk to you a little bit about the fees, because that's how this conversation started so that you could kind of, and you can have this information...
Can I ask a question? Do they have to pass the IB test? If they complete the IB program, they have to complete the test?
They have to pass a certain number of IB tests to receive the diploma, yes, ma'am. So each year, we pay $11,650 for students to receive, per school, for students to, for them offering the diploma. A registration fee per candidate in their junior year is only paid in their junior year, and it's $164 per student. Each test is $113 per test. And the fees, the core fees, these fees are only necessary if students do not pass a test. It's necessary for the IB diploma, they have to pay these fees, or we have to pay these fees for them to retest. This is the actual state statute for acceleration funding. It's very similar for IB and for ACE. Basically, we receive a weighted FTE in IB and ACE for students that pass an exam, as well as for students that receive the diploma. So we receive extra funding for that. And this is an actual rundown from 15-16 of our expenses and the weighted FTE that our schools earned with IB. So you can kind of see that. So you might ask, how is the additional funding used? These are the ways that the additional FTE funding is used to benefit our students and teachers. We also, one of the things we didn't put on here, but we also helped to fund, fund the middle school programs that feed them. Bellevue Middle School, North Marion Middle School students that, the IB program at Howard, they don't get, receive anything to be able to do those, so they're feeding high school. The high school that they feed actually helps them with the professional development, actually helps them with those FTE funds. We purchase technology, pay for their professional development. Also purchase materials for them and pay their annual fees and exams. And also, it's in statute that every student, teacher who has a student that passes a test receives $50. And that used to be capped at $2,000, but it's now basically, any student that passes, they get, receive $50 tied to that. So the next program that I want to discuss is ACE and the Cambridge Program. And the Cambridge Program is an international curriculum that emphasizes broad and balanced study. And it's a little less regimented in terms of what students can do than the IB program, meaning that they can choose their courses a little more, have a little more choice in their course. They earn up to 45 hours of college credit for successfully passing it. And it's the same thing that I spoke about at IB. If they get their ACE diploma, those students are able to not qualify for Bright Futures without having to meet testing or GPA requirements. This is the information for ACE also. An ACE diploma, an annual fee, first of all, is for the high schools. We never pay an annual fee because we go over the threshold of tests that are necessary to pay one, so we don't actually pay for an annual fee for the high schools, we do for the middle schools. The ACE diploma per candidate is $96. It's different than IB in that they actually apply for it their senior year. So not all students may get an ACE diploma. They may get the ACE coursework and get college credit, but they not, may not aspire for the ACE diploma. The subject level per test, you can kind of see here that the AS level and the A level are different. Those are based on level of difficulty. You may have a biology A level, AS level, which is a college biology I. And then the A level would be college biology II, would be equivalent to that. And then the global perspectives, that's required for an ACE diploma also. This is also the state statute that I shared with you earlier, very similar for ACE acceleration funding there. They receive an additional .16 for a student that passes a test. They receive a .08 for a half a credit that they're enrolled and pass the test, and they receive an actual .3 extra for any student that receives the ACE diploma. So here, this is the ACE information for you there. And that just kind of gives you the information as far as what our schools have generated there.
And does that, so that completely offsets the cost?
Yes.
In this middle column, that's all the expenses associated with the program?
That's all the expenses that we pay on tests. Now, they do use the other information, the other money to buy instructional materials, but that's left over to be able to do that, to be able to support the programs. So that's the expenses that we paid in tests, in documents, and things, fees, all the things that we had to pay that I went over in the slides, that's count there. Obviously, they get it as a differentiation, and that's where they actually support the programs.
Thank you. Good evening. Alright, the next acceleration program I want to look at, which you probably are more familiar with, is the Advanced Placement Program, or AP. And this is a little bit different than ACE or IB in that there's no diploma tied to it. So students are very flexible in terms of what they can take. So if I'm a student who's really passionate about science, and I'm very good at science, I can choose just to take an Advanced Placement Science course and not go full out in all the AP courses and take honors as opposed to those AP courses. Or if I'm somebody who really wants to challenge myself, there is flexibility for them to take multiple courses. Students can earn up to 45 hours of college credit for passing those exams as well. But again, no diploma tied to this. The fees are a little different because there's no diploma, we don't pay an annual fee to AP. We only pay the testing fees. And you'll see on the testing fees, what's unique about AP is that they actually offer us a reduced cost fee for students who are qualified for free or reduced lunch. And none of the other groups offer that. So we actually pay less for our students, and we know a lot of our students do qualify for free or reduced lunch. So that's actually a cost-saving measure for us that college board has extended for their AP program. The acceleration funding, again, is from the same statute, but because there is no diploma, we don't earn as much acceleration funding. We only earn the .16 for students who pass an AP exam. These are the schools that currently offer Advanced Placement. You can see what their total expenses were for 2015-16, and then the additional weighted FTE funding we earned as a result of students passing exams at those schools. So again, more than supports what we're doing in those programs to cover the cost of all those exams. Now, we're going to take a look at the results of the different programs, just so you can get a glimpse of how our students perform. And again, this is 2015-16 data, so it's a year old because we want to make sure we're connecting the same years of FTE with the results that we're providing, so it's all consistent. You can see at Lake Weir High School, Lake Weir is our newer IB program. Vanguard is our oldest program, so Lake Weir's IB program is not as large. There's not as many students in there as they are still growing that program. And they don't offer as many exams each year, but they do have good success with the students who are in there. Vanguard High School, and this is a little bit harder to read because they have such a large program, they have lots of exams that they offer to those students, which is good for those students, gives them lots of choice and flexibility in terms of the courses they're taking. You'll see much larger numbers of students who are involved in those courses as well through Vanguard, as Vanguard is our older IB program.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So how many students would have been in that program in 2016?
Um, I would say in the neighborhood of 150.
So only 80 took the Engla, I'm talking, I guess these are senior exams?
Right, so in IB, you don't take exams freshman and sophomore year. AP and ACE, you actually have flexibility as a freshman and sophomore. You can take those college level. IB, they're only tested junior and senior year. So they may have 300, 400 kids from ninth through 12th grade in the program, but we're only looking at the 11th and 12th graders who are tested.
That's what I meant. So what kind of numbers are you looking at for like juniors and seniors that might be eligible for this exam?
Uh, typically, there's about 150 students, but what they take varies because they don't all have the exact same requirements. And so some of the courses, like the English course, you'll see 120 kids in there. Some of the courses, like chemistry, you may only see 35 or 40 kids in there. So it just depends on what the course is. And ACE is the same way, there's...
That's why I was looking, I didn't see 100 and something in the English class, that's why I thought...
Yes. Yeah, should be more. Um, well, there's 80 in there, and, but that's pretty typical for those courses for that size. Lake Weir had about 35.
Why would some students not take the exam?
They do, just, this is 15-16, so only part of them took it. Some of them may have taken it the previous year as a junior, and they're seniors now. Or some of them may be taking it the next year as seniors, so it just depends. So again, this is just a one-year snapshot of what our students are doing right here. Good questions. ACE exam results, Bellevue High School is our older ACE. They're the original ACE program and one of the earliest ACE programs in the country, if I recall, from when they adopted this program. So again, they've got a very large program, they offer lots of courses to their students. Majority of them are AS level, which are the entry-level courses that we see, but they do offer some A level or the more difficult level of the courses. And again, large numbers of students, over 100 students in some of those classes that are taking those courses. And then some that are a little bit more specific to students, like the chemistries and the physics and things that we don't get as large a number of students in. You'll see more of 35, 40 kids in a class that are taking those. North Marion High School is our second ACE program. They're a little bit smaller, they are newer programs. So again, there, this is a program that over the years has slowly grown and added their numbers. And so they've been able to expand the number of courses that they offer, and also expand the number of students who are in those classes. So again, this is still a developing program compared to Bellevue, but we're still, we're getting larger numbers each year within that program.
It's interesting that 22% only passed US history, but 59% passed European history.
Yes, um, well, yes, and, and it's... It's, it's one of those anomalies, and those, those results, again, we're looking just at 15-16, and those results fluctuate. So next year, 16-17, we may have 56% pass. The year before, we may have had 72% pass. So you're looking at one cohort of students, and it just depends on what they were taking and what those students were involved in. But the, all these results for all the schools will fluctuate from year to year, just depending on who's in there. Yes, and all of our students in those US history courses take the state EOC for US history, and we have close to 100% pass rate every year from Bellevue and from North Marion High School for those students in that class. So this is a, just an anecdote on the side, we've been looking at 15-16, but I think this is very germane to our discussion here because Bellevue and North Marion High School stepped outside and did something a little different last year with their ACE program. And in an effort to challenge more of their students to accelerate themselves, as both those schools have a history of students not necessarily wanting to self-select more challenging courses, and so we wanted to encourage them to expose them to that more rigorous curriculum, both schools opted to place all the seniors into an ACE General Paper class. And ACE General Paper is a college-level English course, it counted as their senior English class. So regardless of how they did on the exam, they were able to earn their senior English credit that they needed to graduate. What we found from the students who were in there with the correct support from the teacher and the encouragement from everybody around that they could be successful in this class, we ended up with 461 seniors taking that test. At North Marion, we only had two seniors that didn't show up at 8:00 AM on exam day, which is pretty impressive for seniors to show up early in the morning and taking a test. And we had 68% pass between the two schools. And this is huge, this is not our normal ACE kids. These are kids who had never been in an ACE class before, had never taken anything challenging before. Some of them were in intensive reading just the year before, and here they were... And here, they were taking a college-level class, taking a college-level exam at the end of the year, and we had sixty-eight percent of those students passing. So, when you factor back in the students who were already in ACE last year, you're looking at more than seventy percent of the seniors who graduated from both North Marion and Bellevue leaving with college credit in hand. And I think that's a real testament to what our students are capable of doing if we give them the opportunity and we believe that they are capable and afford them that chance to take these challenging courses. All right, AP exam results. Dunellen High School has a very small AP exam cadre that they use. Because they are an early college program, the majority of their students go into the early college program, but they do have a handful of AP classes in small numbers that, some of them are for freshmen and sophomores that are taking them before they get into early college. And some of them are for students that opt not to do the early college program. Forest High School has a much more robust program as they have a very small on-campus dual enrollment. So, this is their primary acceleration that they use for their juniors and seniors at Forest High School. So, they have a large number of students who are in those classes and offer a much larger range of courses that students can take within the advanced placement. Lakeview High School, also very small as they are an IB school, so they just offer a few AP classes for students who are not interested in doing the IB program. It gives them an alternative that they can still accelerate in a couple of courses without having to go into the IB program. So, again, small numbers. Vanguard High School also offers just a few courses to fill in some needed areas for them. But again, they are an IB school, so primarily their students are going into the IB program, which is why you'll see typically small numbers in most of their classes. I also want to add a, a personal story in here while we're talking about advanced placement because I am a former advanced placement teacher. I taught advanced placement world history, among other subjects that I taught in my career in the classroom. And my last year of teaching, I had six straight periods of advanced placement world history. That program had grown very quickly in the few years since I started. And I had over a hundred and forty students in this class. Many of the students that were in my class were Level Two readers on the FCAP, meaning they were not the typical students that you would expect to see in an advanced placement course. But I was never somebody who would turn away students who wanted to challenge themselves and accelerate themselves. I wanted to push them, I wanted to believe in them. And so, I kept them in my class, and we worked, and we developed, and I pushed them at the same level as all my other students in the course. Now, I'm not going to stay in here and tell you that a hundred percent of my kids passed the AP World History exam because that would not be true. But I will tell you is that a hundred percent of my students at the end of that year passed the FCAP. And a hundred percent of my students showed more than one year's growth on the FCAP because they were challenged to a level that they had never worked before. They were asked to read more challenging texts. They were asked to write at a different level. They were surrounded by their peers who pushed them and encouraged them as well. And we saw great results in a very impactful way on the FCAP. And then we saw more of those students going in the next year to continue taking AP courses. And the next year, they were even more successful with more students passing AP US history the following year because they had that exposure, and they were now ready to work at that level. So, I think it's important to note that not all of our results are immediately tangible with our AP results, but we see a lot of other things that really benefit our students as a result of being involved in a rigorous curriculum like that. And then Westport High School, again, hard to read because they have tons of classes available as they are our largest high school in Marion County. But again, most of their students do the early college dual enrollment program on campus. So, most of the numbers you see here are students who are freshmen and sophomore taking college-level classes to challenge themselves before early college. Or they are students who are not involved in the early college program that just wanted one or two classes to challenge themselves with.
And one of the important things about these type of courses too, as a teacher, Mr. Whitehouse is very modest, but those students wanted to be in his class, and they knew that he would challenge them, but they didn't shy away from the challenge. And that's one of the most important things that we talk about. Is the teacher that you put in front of those students has just had them out in these courses. So, let's talk a little bit about dual enrollment. Dual enrollment is where you get high school and college credit. Originally, it was for only eleventh and twelfth graders. As most of you know from previous work sessions, state statute has now said in sixth grade, you can do dual enrollment. And there are parameters that are put on it. But most of our students in Marion County Public Schools are in eleventh and twelfth grade. I think last year, Westport had six tenth graders, and Dunellen maybe had three or four that attempted some dual enrollment classes. So, dual enrollment basically says that a student can get, get as little or as much college credit in high school as they would like to do. They get high school credit for it, and they get college credit, hence dual. And what happens is they can, like I said, my son took dual enrollment classes at Westport High School. He was not ready to get an AA degree. He was not ready to get sixty hours of credit, but he got nine hours. So, when he went to the College of Central Florida and continued his education, he was ahead of the game. Many of our students, I think Westport last year had sixty-five, the year before they had seventy-six students, get their AA. That's the great thing about dual enrollment, is that students have choice, and they can do those types of things. Now, students can take courses on the CF campus through all of our seven high schools. The College of Central Florida has designated Westport High School and Dunellen High School as early college programs, meaning they can offer as many college courses on their campus as they can get teachers to teach. And they have to be accredited teachers through the college, so that's not always an easy thing to do because especially at Dunellen with a smaller program, they have to teach high school and college. Also, Forest does not have an early college program, but they do have some classes that they offer on their campus. So, in addition to the advanced placement that we talked about before, they also offer English. And I don't think, they had math in the past. I think they're just doing English right now where students can do that. And also, by state statute, Marion County Public Schools is required to have one collegiate high school. And obviously, with the amount of students that we have enrolled, Westport High School is our collegiate high school. So, you can kind of see here in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, what the participation was and what the total number of credit hours that students earned per location was. And the average, not average, but the average course at the College of Central Florida is three credit hours. So, basically, if you take that ninety-one hundred and divide it by three, our students in that year earned over three thousand credit hours towards college at our seven high schools and MTI at that time. And you can see one interesting thing here that I'd like you to note is that when fifty-six hundred and nine, five thousand six hundred and nine, or fifty-six hundred and nine stu, hours were earned at Westport High School, but four thousand five hundred and sixty-four were earned on the Westport campus. That's huge. When we get to a slide in a moment, we talk about funding. Same with Dunellen High School. Thirteen hundred and one hours were earned by Dunellen High School students, but seven hundred and fifty, or about sixty percent of them, were earned on the Dunellen campus. So, what does that mean? You look here, the state statute says that dual enrollment programs that, about three or four years ago, I believe it was two thousand thirteen, fourteen, that school district shall pay publics, post-secondary institutions a standard tuition rate for credit hours that are taken on the college campus or online. So, if you look at that, you can kind of see that we have to put out funds by state statute for our students to participate in dual enrollment. And you can see here what the expenses were in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen for our schools. We spent a total of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars approximately on dual enrollment. And that's for each school. But if you look at it, and you look at some of the schools, you look at that Dunellen, who had a lot more students, get a lot more hours, is only a little bit below Forest and only a little bit above Bellevue. That's because those students took courses on the Dunellen High School campus, which were, didn't cost the district anything. Westport High School is the same thing. The district also pays for their instructional materials through state statute. So, I just kind of wanted to share those with you. So, we do, this is what we do spend approximately each year, and we budget this each year for dual enrollment. We also budget dual enrollment materials. What else?
I'm surprised it's not more than that.
Yeah.
So, what we want to take a look at as well is not just our numbers and what we have, but also what does the research say about our acceleration programs? One of the concerns I know that's brought up very often is what happens to our students that don't pass the exams? Our students who don't pass that college-level exam at the end of the year? Are they doomed to struggle for the rest of their careers? And what we've seen, not just anecdotally through our own conversation and work with students on our campuses, but also what we see in the research is that's not the case. And so, this is a very interesting study that was published in two thousand sixteen. And I put up some of the charts for you, and we're going to discuss this in just a minute. But the, the premise of this study was they were taking a look at students who took advanced placement courses and looking at them longitudinally over seven years and how they performed when they got to the university system. And they specifically focused on students who were from low socioeconomic status and how those students performed, not only on the test, but then also how they transitioned to college. So, what you'll see here in the data that you see, there's two different charts. The red chart, the one on the right-hand side, those are students who took an advanced placement course. And in this case, for this chart, it's advanced placement English. They took the course, and they didn't pass that exam. Whichever English language exam it was, there's multiple. They took it, and they scored a one or two, so they did not qualify for the college credit. So, they wanted to look at what happened to those students. So, they matched these students with peers with similar backgrounds who did not take an accelerated course, did not take an advanced placement course, to track and compare how they did. So, the way they matched them was they took students, so if I have one student who didn't pass, I matched them with a student who was the same gender, same ethnicity, the same low SES, socioeconomic status. Their parents had a similar educational background, so maybe their parents did not have education beyond high school, but they were matched on that, and also the same SAT scores. So, that way, they were still matched with their aptitude. We knew the capability of the student was similar. The only real difference was one took AP and one did not. And so, what we see in the results across the years of this program, immediately following high school, we had a higher rate of students who did not pass the AP exam, the ones or twos, that enrolled into a four-year university. Now, the study did not look at two-year colleges, only looked at four-year universities. But sixty-nine percent of those students enrolled in a four-year university compared to fifty-five percent of the students who did not take an AP class, who were matched with comparable data. The second part there is persistence. That means that they made it through their, they survived their freshman year of college. They made it into their second year and enrolled in courses for their second year. The next column shows what percent graduated in four years. And the final column, those that graduated within six years from a four-year university. And you can see in each one of these columns, the students who took an AP exam and didn't pass, so we were concerned about them, but they didn't pass, they still outperformed the students who never took an AP class. And the reason behind this is because those students have been exposed to a higher level, a more rigorous curriculum that is going to expose them to what they're going to see in college. So, when they get to college, they're prepared. They've seen it, they know it. They know what they have to do, they know how hard they have to work, they know how to study. And the students who have not been exposed to that are going to struggle more. This next one shows data for students who took an AP math class. The numbers are a little bit higher here because there's fewer students who take AP math because, let's face it, it's math, and it's not everybody's strong suit. So, there's fewer students who are taking it. But the results, again, are overwhelmingly in the favor of the students who took AP math and did not pass, and they still outperformed. They enrolled at a higher percent in four universities, again, by a large margin. They were persistent, they graduated in four years. And two-thirds of them who did not pass an AP exam in high school graduated with a four-year degree within six years. And so, that's a testament to those students and the success they had from the rigor they were exposed to. This next chart, again, looks at students in AP science. Again, you see the same thing. One, two, three, four, all four of them, the students who took those AP classes outperformed the students who did not, who were matched from the same backgrounds as those students. And then finally, students who are in social studies, history AP classes. Again, all four categories outperforming those students who did not take an AP class. And I can tell you, this looks specifically at AP, but having worked as a principal in a school with ACE for four years, you're going to see the same trends from A schools and from IB schools. The students who were exposed to these programs, and when they came back and spoke to me about how they were experiencing college and what it was like, they were ready, they were prepared, they were successful, and they kept telling me stories of their peers who didn't get to take those courses and how much they struggled when they were there because they didn't know, they weren't ready. They didn't know how hard they had to study. And our students who take these programs are prepared. They're ready, they exceed, they suc, they're successful when they get to college. And it's because we're giving them that opportunity to prepare and advance themselves before they get to those colleges. So, that's what the research says. What do the Florida public universities say? And this is directly from the Board of Governors for the State University System of Florida that they provided to our counselors last year. And what they are, the State University System is telling our students is that it's important for seniors to take a rigorous senior year to better prepare themselves, but also to make themselves more competitive. Our universities are very competitive in the state of Florida. People come from all around the world wanting to come to universities in Florida. And so, for our students to be competitive, they need to have that rigorous coursework. In addition to higher-level academic, we strongly, this is them talking, we strongly recommend accelerated credit options. That means in order to get into the State University System in Florida, they strongly recommend our students take either AP, ACE, IB, or dual enrollment. And you'll see at the last part, that it doesn't matter which one. So, there's no advantage, which is why we don't push one program or the other. We give choices. We allow our students opportunities to choose because all these accelerated programs are equally good in the eyes of our State University System. So, where do our students go? And this is not an exhaustive list. The, I'd go on this PowerPoint for another three hours if we talked about all the different colleges our students could get into. But I think this represents some of the great universities and programs that we want our students to go to. And these are kids going from AP programs, ACE programs, IB programs, dual enrollment programs. They're getting into Harvard, they're getting into Yale, they're getting into Duke, they're getting into Cornell, they're getting into Stanford, MIT, multiple military academies. And they're getting into all of our State University Systems in the state of Florida. UF, FSU, USF, UCF, UNF, UWF, and University of Miami, even our private universities. So, our students are everywhere, and they're exceeding and suc, and successful in those programs when they get there. So, why is this important? And this is part of why we do what we do and why we need to have choices to encourage our students to look at post-secondary options. This is a Georgetown University jobs projection that they released a few years ago. And what they said was by the year 2020, which by my watch is right around the corner, sixty-five percent of all jobs in the economy will require post-secondary education training beyond high school. Sixty-five percent, that's two-thirds of the jobs out there, will require some kind of training education beyond high school. And that's crucial. When we look at the rest of this data, the last point I think here is really relevant. At the current rate, this is Georgetown University's projection, at the current rate, the US will fall short by five million workers with post-secondary education. We won't have enough qualified workers to fill the jobs that are out there because the jobs require more education than they have in the past. So, it's imperative that we, as a school system, are providing those choices and those options for our students to accelerate, to show them that they can succeed beyond high school. This graph, I think, gives you a really good demonstration of how that's changed. This far left over here shows you nineteen seventy-three. This is the generation that the parents of our current high school students probably grew up in. And you can see that seventy-two percent of the jobs available at that time only required high school diplomas or less. And you can see how rapidly that has changed over the last forty years for the requirements of our students. And now, we know that we've got to be able to encourage those students to find, whether it's a two-year degree, a four-year degree, or advanced certification beyond high school. I tell my students, high school diploma cannot be a destination. It's a starting point for the rest of their lives. It's their chance to then branch out into the different directions that they're going to accomplish great things. And I think that we have the programs in place to be able to achieve those things here in Marion County. Thank you.
And, and to kind of close, one of the important points to know is when Mr. Viennello comes and talks to you about CTE and talks to you about the things that we're doing in CTE, a lot of times, we operate in silos and we operate not in tandem. What we're trying to do with these programs at our high schools is what, work in what Mr. Viennello and his folks, if you looked on there, you saw STEM and healthcare were two of those positions. And those are traditional CTE courses that also need, you know, post-secondary education. So, we're really trying to work hard with our students and counsel them to make sure that it's a best fit for them. One program doesn't fit all, and that's why Mark has been very aggressive at the middle school level at really working with students so they know about all these choices. And then they can kind of plan, knowing, as I told you in June when we talked about this, something with education, that they may change their major three or four times by the time. If they can't make up their mind in college, sometime they may not be able to make it up in high school. But we have the choices. So, if they decide to make that change, they can make that change and be comfortable that they have something else to go to. Instead of saying, we have an advanced placement program, we have an IB program, and that's all we got. So, wanted to just kind of end with that, and we'll take your questions.
Questions, Ms. Stacy?
I would be curious, on the AP, on the AP comparisons, of students who didn't enroll in AP and students who did, who did that study?
Sure. The study was published by the College Board because they're using-
See, that's what I was wondering.
Sure, but they're using advanced, they're using advanced placement data, and they're using SAT data, which is readily available to those programs. But it's a research study that's been published that you can certainly look through. But again, I'll give you my anecdotal on that. Having been a high school principal, having worked in an advanced placement school as a teacher and as an administrator and as an ACE principal, our students who don't succeed in those programs are better prepared. And it's not just data I'm looking at, it's students coming back, their voices telling me, I was better prepared for college because I challenged myself in this program. And I would take that, remember I said earlier, the payout is not always immediate. We don't always see the result right away in terms of pass rates on exams, which we would love to see, absolutely. But the end result is, do those students meet the final destination? Have we prepared them for what lies beyond high school to get there? And that's what we're seeing in these, in these programs. Whether it's AP, whether it's ACE, whether it's IB, whether it's dual enrollment, they're all giving them those opportunities to excel and to succeed. all giving them those opportunities to excel and to succeed.
Right, but I would like to see, because David Coleman really is not, I don't know if he's even ever taught school before, I think he's like sociology major or something. But being the, one of the major architects of Common Core and being involved in all that, I really would like to see the study. If you can get that for me.
Sure.
Because I'm not real sure.
Any other questions?
Not that one.
Mr. James?
Looking at the ACE program now, talk to us a little bit about the feeder programs that could lead us into ACE. Do ya?
Yeah, so we offer currently two feeder programs, one at Bellevue Middle School, which feeds into Bellevue High School, obviously, and then one at North Marion Middle School. The goal of both those programs is to expose them to the type of learning curriculum that they're going to see when they get to the high school. ACE is a very writing-heavy program, which they're not used to. So when those students get to those ACE exams, they're doing a lot of writing. It's not a lot of multiple choices, a lot of writing. Even the math exams require a lot of writing. So it's getting those students prepared at the middle school level for the type of work and the level of work that they're going to have to do when they get to high school. So when they show up, they're more prepared, they're ready to start, because we have students freshman year in both North Marion and Bellevue that are taking college-level courses and college-level exams their freshman year of high school, and they're rolling.
Okay, now, we got the middle school. Now, what about the elementary? What are we doing in elementary? Do we have any, are we identifying students in the elementary level?
Yes, absolutely. And part of the process, again, it's, it's part of our magnet school choice option. So those students select where they want to go for their middle schools in order to offer those programs. So we have students from the feeder elementary schools that we worked identify, but those middle schools are also out there at the magnet expos and selling what they have to attract students from all over. And North Marion Middle School, having worked down that side, they got students from other areas other than just the Reddick, Anthony, the typical schools that you'd see there. They pulled students from all over the county who wanted to come out there because they liked what they saw in terms of that ACE curriculum, and Bellevue is doing the same thing now.
Okay, we talk a lot about the young parent schools, but in the Fort McCoy area, and this has always been a concern of mine, in Fort McCoy and East Marion, I know we're supposed to be starting something or getting something going out there in order to entice these kids to come to the program. But there's always been a problem in reference to the transportation for those kids to come in. So what are we doing in that area to get some of the ACE programs out there, out towards, especially for the middle school out there? Have we did anything in that area?
So the, a large majority of the Fort McCoy kids automatically come to North Marion High School and get the transportation there, and a lot of them get into the Cambridge program because we sell them on the program as eighth graders. We get out to their schools, we talk with them, we share with them what it's about, and we encourage them to be a part of that program. For the students who aren't quite ready to take college-level courses in ninth grade, we offer pre-ACE curriculum as well, which gives them that exposure in ninth grade to then be successful 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So we actually have quite a few Fort McCoy students who are in that Cambridge program at North Marion.
Okay.
I thank you for all the information you gave us. As I looked around, I thought, maybe, is this on our website, some of this information?
Some of it is available, yes.
Okay.
Not all of it.
I think maybe we should put for everyone, for everyone, because when you look at the expenses, then the parents and our community will be able to look and say, why we have this funding and what's going on? I think it was something we should do up there on the website, okay? But thank you, all the information you gave us.
Very, very informative, and you have answered a lot of my questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayer, you have a student data update to present?
Yes, Dr. Grantham and his team will come on up and share this, and this, again, was in response to questions about where we are and where we're going. And it's exciting for us to share with you exactly where we're going and what we've done with the data we have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Chulley, and Dr. Mayer. This is my team. We're going to present some information about student data and tell you where we are and where we're going, what we're doing in between. So-
You want me to drive it, or do you have it?
I'm going to drive, so welcome.
Okay, good evening again, Board. What we would like to do is provide a brief overview. When I spoke with Dr. Mayer and Dr. Grantham about the request to kind of provide a snapshot of where we're at as a district, we discussed what data we want to provide to you. As you know, there is a lot of data of various sorts. And so we wanted to provide something to you that is the best snapshot of where we believe that we're at, and also something that we can compare apples to apples when we come back to you, so that we can just show how that data compares to what we're going to show you tonight. That tool that we have implemented this year district-wide is iReady, and I just have this graphic to kind of go over the three different areas of iReady. The orange section is really what I'm here to talk about tonight, and that is the adaptive assessment and the progress monitoring piece. The teacher-led instruction, student-driven online instruction are parts of that program that can be used at schools to supplement good quality instruction from the teacher if they so choose. But the adaptive assessment is kind of what we will go over in that data from the first offering of that. So why iReady? First, it's an adaptive, universal screening assessment that measures skills in math and reading. It is aligned to the standards, it's reported out by domain, which we'll cover in just a few minutes, and it is a common assessment for K through eight students. So the data you'll see tonight, all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade students took this assessment in AP1 or Assessment Period 1. And, and again, there's other assessments, other data that we're using at the district, school, and in the classroom level to monitor where our students are at, see strengths and weaknesses. But this, again, is a high, you know, arcing view of kind of where we're at. I just wanted to point out, other assessments obviously used for grades nine through 12, I won't cover that tonight. This is a K through eight designed program and assessment. Assessment periods one, two, and three, just want to speak briefly about that and how this is administered. This is a universal screener, diagnostic assessment, again, given through kindergarten through eighth-grade students. It's given three times a year. AP1 is in the fall, AP2 is in the winter, AP3 is in the spring. And again, it's adaptive, and this graphic just shows what, what that means. So a student will start out the assessment in their grade level of enrollment, and then based on their response to a question, either correct or incorrect, it will adjust the complexity of those questions. So at the end of the assessment, you have a true picture of where they're at and an appropriate grade level placement according to that diagnostic.
The principal hat, we think about your AP1. AP1 is based off of what they're supposed to know when they get out of that grade. So it's kind of a pre-test. So if I were a principal and I saw the AP1 data, I wouldn't get really upset because I haven't learned that yet. Where you start really paying attention is AP2. Back in the day, we used to have one, two, three, four. We used to pay attention to AP3. Now, we're really focused on AP2, and John's going to talk about that, but AP2 is when you're starting to get true where the kid's learning is at. So you're going to see some AP1 scores, but remember, it's where they're supposed to be when they get out of that grade at the end of the year, not if they're far behind.
Okay, real quick, I won't go through each one of these, but again, after the student takes the diagnostic assessment, these are the domains that are assessed and reported out. So even down to the student-level report, the student, the teacher can parent can see in these specific areas where the student is at. Quick summary of our Semester One iReady implementation. Again, iReady is implemented across the district for the first time this school year. Last year, we did have some schools, a small number of schools, that utilized iReady, but for our progress monitoring tool and our universal screener, it is district-wide at all of our elementary and middle schools. So we had a successful launch of AP1, which did provide us the baseline data, which we'll go over tonight. It does provide data-driven instructional decisions. It provides a common language of student growth. So again, as we move forward to AP2 and 3, we can compare the same data. And it does provide data and resources, whether the instructional pieces that I spoke about before, or as the, the assessment reports out the information for the teacher and the student to see. Okay, so this is the performance by grade level, and we're going to start with math. I highlighted and bolded the dates because I want to make sure that I emphasize that. Again, this is from AP1, Assessment Period 1. So from the very beginning of school, and I put through October 20th, but technically approximately 90% of our schools had already administered the AP1 by September the 7th. So we're talking over three months ago, a snapshot of where our students are at. Couple of other things I'd like to point out to you is, if I can, right here under the blue bar, you will notice where it says "Define On Level," and that is standard view. And what standard view means is when that diagnostic assessment is given, where is a student at in comparison to early of that grade level, mid, or late? There are other views that could have been used. For example, beginning of the year view, if I would have used that view, this data would look much, much better because it accounts for even students at the end of last year and where they're at moving to this year.
These are all of our grade 10, all of our grade 9 students?
No, ma'am. And, and thank you for pointing that out. Grade 9 and grade 10, we primarily, we did use iReady for, for specific reasons, Algebra I students mainly. So we could get some, some data back on that. And that's why you'll see the numbers aren't representative of that entire grade level. And that's a good point that I was going to mention here. If you notice, the last column is total students in that grade level in our district. The column to the left of that is the number of students assessed. And you will see that if we look at kindergarten, for example, 2,894 total kindergarten students, 2,800 took the assessment. So we have a very good representation of each grade level.
John, let me, let me, if I'm wearing my principal hat and I'm looking at this, and this is my AP1, I'm first on holy smokes, we got, we got some work to do, I'm thinking that. So if I, I want you to look at these, if I see that grade, the grade K, that's our kindergarten readiness that we've talked about before, 18% are coming to us ready, or maybe a little beyond ready. But, and then I got to start looking at cohorts of students. Do I see any cohorts? I look at that first grade class, and as a district, I go, what's happening? Did we miss something? Is there a big slumber slide, a slumber slide that's been K and 1? So I'm looking at those, and I see grade 5, and I go, why is grade 5 somewhat higher than some of the other grades? But I want to point you to remember this is math, it's not reading. Math is more concrete, it's easier to retain. If this was AP2, I would be really, really upset. But this is a baseline of where we are. I'm looking at cohorts, and I see something happening in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, if I'm a principal looking at that. I see that we're falling, what's happening? Is the reader going up, or are we not performing, or are we talking? And pay attention to the math as compared to as we look at ELOA.
So again, same information, performance by grade level for that AP1 assessment, and this is for reading.
So toggle back, so let's just pick 5th grade again. We have 32% in 5th grade, 32% math. Okay, let's pick another one. Let's do the kindergarteners here, we're at kindergarten, we get 18 and 23. So maybe that parents are reading more than their students and they're doing math problems with them. So we're trying to see some kind of trends. And we look at data over time, this is one snapshot with one cohort of students. So we're trying to find some paths. Again, baseline data, not scary. If this is AP2, very scary.
Okay, so the next report that I wanted to show you was the needs analysis by, by grade level. And again, we'll start with math, and these were the domains that I spoke about earlier and how this assessment reports out the data. So a couple of things we want to notice here is obviously the overall math level, and the scale score ranges for iReady is 0 to 800. And so the overall math level here is a 421, and I put this insert here on the ranges. Remember when I said the standard view, when we're looking at this data, looks at early, mid, and late of that grade level? So you will notice, and again, this is just 3rd grade, and in your packets, I've given you every grade level K and 8. But for the purpose of, of an example, we're looking at 3rd grade math, and you'll see our overall math level is a 421, and the early level range to be one grade level is 449, which coincides with the slides that we just looked at. So it is important to understand that overall, but also as the domains, it allows us, and again, this is a district report, so as district, if we're looking at math, is there any specific domain that our students are struggling with? You see here, it's a pretty close cluster of scale scores. Number and operations, geometry is a little bit below, but nothing significant in terms of, in correlation to the others. But overall, the math level is low. I mean, this is telling us that for the, it's not reaching that early 3rd grade level. Now, does this mean that every student is at that level? No, this is an average. We have students below that, we have students above that. And if we were to look at school data, not just district level, we'd have the same. We'd have some schools that are higher at this, and some that are lower at this specific level.
So this is what we're doing with this data right now. What have we taken AP1, what are we going to get ready for? And you should see that at the beginning of every slide, building human capacity. We got to get teachers, we got to get them armed with knowledge so they can, some work with this. Last year, we talked about, we got to have a standardized assessment so that we can talk apples to apples, talk one elementary school to another elementary school. So we know what we're doing. This has, and John alluded to it earlier, some schools are using iReady, Sunrise used iReady, other schools not. Well, if it's good enough for Sunrise, why isn't it good enough for every other school? So now we're doing it together, and what we're doing as a collective district, we say that we haven't taught this skill with a standard like we should. We need to provide PD to our folks so that they can teach the concept to the students. So we're seeing more holistic, more specific things that focus on. Well, John and I did a video today for parents about assessment. We have all these acronyms in education. What are QSMA, what are CSMA, what are DRA? John and I did that today so parents can see that, have a conversation with their students. So this is all encapsulated in one big thing. We are taking a standardized assessment to change our instruction district-wide, school by school.
Same report as I showed earlier, this is for reading. A couple of things that are different that I'd like to point out. You'll see there's an overall reading level, and if you look right above that green bar, you see the blue dot for AP1. Once we have AP2, we'll be able, right here on the same report, for 3rd grade reading, be able to see the comparison between the two. So a direct correlation. But one thing that I'd like to point out is you'll see those student numbers here on the side, and the three categories that have an asterisk next to it, again, we're talking about 3rd grade reading. So you'll notice the numbers are less, and for phonological awareness, you'll notice there's no data, and that's because by that level, they're, they tested out of those domains. And so that's why there's zero students that even got questions on that, because they tested out of that domain. But again, with the chart, you can see the, for 3rd grade reading as an example, the overall reading level is a 492, and early for 3rd grade is a 511.
Again, this is everything we're doing. And John keeps saying correlated, and we got to make sure we're using that word correctly. We try to correlate things in school a lot of the time, we do it incorrectly. It was cold at the Christmas spray, that does not mean that every time we have a Christmas spray, it's going to be cold. That's not a direct correlation. iReady and all these assessments are giving us direct correlation so that we can change and guide instruction. That's what every single bit of this does. Big picture, district sees needs, sees trends, we, we, we train our CASs, they train our teachers, it gets to the standards, it gets to the students.
Could you mention the foundations?
Yes, and-
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we did not, the foundations, we get FEFP dollars from the state. We didn't get this FEFP budget approved. We actually got it on October 19th approved. We had to get it board approved and do all, so we're doing the training. I believe every school has been training with foundations, so it's out, the schools have it, they're using it. It's taking a little longer than we like, but because of the lag time from DOE to get everything approved, foundations is going now.
Okay, so our next steps, as we've mentioned, Assessment Period or AP2 opens as soon as we return from break. So that, again, will give us our, our next data point that we can compare to see what growth that we have made from AP1. Continuing to use the data for data chats with teachers and students to look at their own data, to see what their growth is and what goals they can set. We are continuing to support schools with implementation of iReady. We can't forget, at least from our department, this is a new assessment. This is a huge rollout for our district. So we are continuing to make our school visits and, and train the schools on proper implementation. And obviously, I'll be more than happy to come back and update the board after AP2. AP2, the window is open for around three weeks, so by end of January, early February, I can have that data to show you the comparison.
So as we wrap up, we talked about AP1, so I'm going to go back to the AP2. We're going to give you the AP1 data, we're going to give you the AP2 data, we're going to see if there's growth. If we're growing, we're getting better. That's the whole point of AP2. More importantly than that, we're going to take the AP2 data and count it as real, and it's true data, and then we're going to change our instruction, change our PD, change our focus based on what the correlated, the true correlated data says, and then we'll, we'll, we'll move from there.
Any questions?
Questions, can you go back?
I'd probably like to call you in and talk some information, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, Dr. Mayer, you have a final presentation on the Young Parent Program?
Yes.
So Ms. Upsher, Dr. Upsher and her team will come on up.
Mr. Viennello and friends.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Chulley. As Ms. Chulley hands you a handout that will go along with our presentation, and team members come closer and join me at the podium, I will orient you to kind of what we are planning to share with you. And this slide will serve as kind of our tour, tour guide. So this is relatively lengthy presentation, but we're going to move through several of these slides quickly just to kind of highlight the work that's taking place within the Young Parent Program. And we will go over the purpose of the Young Parent Program, we'll cover a bit of the prevention initiatives that we have in place, the history of the Young Parent Program along with some data trends, our future directions. We'll have a presentation how this correlates with or relates to workforce development. We have several community partnerships that we're excited to share with you, and then just end with the value of our program. So that will be the overview of, of what we plan to share this evening. The first couple of slides are just to make us all aware that this is something that is required by law to provide an education for teen parents within our school system, really with the end goal of helping them to stay on track for graduation with their peers and with their cohort in high school. That's also outlined in the Florida Administrative Code, and you can see there some of the verbiage. That's also outlined in the Florida Administrative Code, and you can see there some of the verbiage. And really, what does this mean to us? And what this equates to is that when students find that they're in a situation as a young teen that they are parenting, male or female, this pertains to students who are already parents and also expecting mothers. This helps provide choices to educate those students, to allow them to return back to their base school, ideally to graduate with their peers on their high school campus. So the idea behind the Teen Parent Program within statute is really not to remove them and have them graduate from that program, but to help them during that time period to stay up with their peers and level the playing field for them. So I'd like to go through a brief history of the Young Parent Program. And I'll start with some information that dates just back about five years to 2013. That's about the time that we noticed the academic rigor increase within education. There's a little more accountability in place, and also we felt like that was a, a good time period to kind of think back and look at some trends. So if you look back since 2013, ninety-one students have participated in the program and were eligible to graduate from high school. So these ninety-one students have participated, and they should have graduated from high school based on their age and where they were during this past five years. Of those ninety-one students, two graduated. Two. So I ask, is a two-point-two percent graduation rate acceptable? We don't believe that's acceptable at all. And therefore, we know that there has to be a renewed focus in how we provide an education to these students, how we find them in our outreach methods to make sure that students and families are aware of this option that is available to all teen parents. And as we move into more of the history, we'll take a, a brief kind of segue into prevention initiatives. And I won't steal any of Ms. Potter's thunder, hopefully, but I do want to highlight that our goal in this is not to increase, obviously, the number of teen parents or increase that challenge, but really to increase the number of students that are aware of our program and that we can reach them and provide this very valuable option for them. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Potter to talk a little bit about prevention.
So we do acknowledge that prevention is key. So in the HOPE standards, the State of Florida acknowledges that as well. Currently, we have two thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-three students enrolled in HOPE. That's a ninth grade course typically in our high schools. But we noticed early on that maybe we needed to target a younger group, so we created a community partnership. The Florida Department of Health in Marion County reformatted its brazen program in 2012. And we did more of a small group format, which was nine sessions, that our schools are using in the eighth and ninth grade classes. So to date, we've had eight thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-three unduplicated students go through that program. And at this time, if you see in my next chart, you'll notice that in 2012, we really do start a downward trend of teen pregnancies here in Marion County. So as you can see, from 2012 to date, we are going down the downward trend. But my next data point lets you know that the students enrolled in our Young Parent Program is still low. So though data is decreasing, we still have a gap between the students that we are truly serving here in Marion County. Our Marion County data clearly shows a visual representation of the evidence of need of this great program to graduate and time, on time, and to address these teen mothers from fourteen to nineteen. Thank you for your time.
So I'll come back to some of the history of the Young Parent Program. And the Young Parent Program here in Marion County began in nineteen eighty-nine. And at that time, there were four portables housed at what was referred to as the Phoenix Center, if you are familiar with that time period. I think Mr. James might have spent a little time at the Phoenix Center in his past. In nineteen ninety-five, the portables, those very same four portables, were moved over to what is now known as Marion Technical College. And I point out that that is an adult education facility. So the same four portables that we've been educating these students and their babies in since nineteen eighty-nine are now sitting at the Marion Technical College campus. And that's where our students are currently being educated. This is a picture of their playground, and you can see they're kind of in industrial park. They're behind the playground as a manufacturing company. And so that's just where we are now. And historically, students in the program have continued with their academic work, and that's been through Play-Doh, primarily for credit recovery, but Play-Doh's also been used for initial credit over the years for our students in the Young Parent Program. And they earned childcare vouchers and brought their babies to the program where they were basically participated in what was babysitting in a nursery-type setting. They were cared for in that setting while their parents were in the other portables being educated. We've averaged about twelve students each semester over the past few years, and I'll go over some data trends in that area in just a moment. Here's our student enrollment trends over time. And so you can see twenty-seven in the thirteen-fourteen school year. And there's been a decline in our student enrollment over the past few years. And now I point you to the current school year. We have thirty students enrolled, and we're here at the midway point. So I do feel very encouraged that through some of our outreach efforts and talking to the secondary counselors, we are reaching more students and getting the word out and finding the students that need the program. We also think it's important to look at our average percentage of attendance. We know that we can't educate students if they're not with us and they're not there. And students who are in this time period of, of parenting and, in their teens, it's a challenge, and we know that. And there are many barriers to getting them to and from school, and challenges that they face personally during this time. And we've made great efforts to ensure that we remove barriers, that we build those relationships with students to help increase our attendance. We're encouraged at the increase there at seventy-nine percent. However, our district average is ninety-four-point-five percent, so we still have room for improvement. So we're celebrating, but we're not where we need to be. So as we increase attendance, we must also increase that two-point-two percent graduation rate. We know we have our work cut out for us, but that is really where we've got our eye on the target, is, is getting the word out and finding our students, getting them to school. And I'll talk a little bit more in a moment about what we're doing to provide that quality education to those students. So we're moving from at-risk to at-promise. Mr. Vianello got excited. He's ready to tell you about what, what he's bringing to the table. So we refer to these students as at-promise, and you think about just the mind shift there. When students are at risk, it, it sounds so negative, and there are so many barriers that we're, we're trying to remove and help them tackle. And we see these students as at-promise, and we're helping them to foster resilience in their efforts to move forward. On the next few slides, you'll see the circle that relates to rigor, relevance, and relationships. And we really feel like that is critical in this program. It's critical in education, but it's really critical that we have a rigorous academic program for these students, that we have high expectations, ambitious but realistic expectations for our students. And we are placing them in Marion Virtual and Florida Virtual courses. Right now, they're all able to get into Marion Virtual and work with our counselor, Ms. Dunning, on academic advisement that is really individualized for them. So she's able to review their transcripts, see what credits they've maybe been deficient in, and they might need credit recovery, but focus on ensuring quality core instruction for those core courses that they need. We also think it's very important to work with them on career and vocational planning, and not yet, Mr. Vianello. I know he's excited to talk about where we're headed in that direction, but talk about those post-secondary goals. As was mentioned earlier, graduation is just the starting point, but we've got to get them there so that they can be full-option graduates. And we do that through providing relevant education as well. So it's gotta be relevant, they've gotta stay on track. And they also are going to participate in, and they do continue to participate, in parenting and help classes. That's not something that's in addition to their regular requirements, but that is really their elective courses. So you think of students who choose electives, what more relevant elective could you choose? And to learn how to be an outstanding parent, and to learn how to make healthy choices. So we feel like that's a really important piece and a very relevant piece of the education that they receive. But we also think it's very important to continue to build those relationships and provide that mentoring-type situation. For anyone who's been a parent, you know those early years were challenging. And oftentimes, there are mommy and me groups and times where you kind of build your support system around you. And we also know that that's important to do with our students, to build that support system amongst one another, that they're all going through similar challenges, and we're able to do that within that safe environment. They're also sure that their students are being, or their, excuse me, their babies are being cared for on campus while they are taking their classes. So let's talk a little bit about their children, the babies in the program. It's very important that we move towards more developmentally appropriate practices in our childcare setting and facility, that those classrooms are educationally stimulating. It's not just a nursery. It's not just a place where your child is cared for and kept safe. But they're also in a literacy-rich environment where it's critical for language acquisition, that they are read to and that they're talked to, and that we know there are certain milestones that they should be achieving. And there's a lot we can do in that setting to ensure that they achieve those milestones, and we can model that for their young parents who are also trying to learn this process. If you see the picture that we have here on this slide, I'm not sure if you can tell what's going on here. This is Ms. Orlean Parks, one of our workers in the childcare program. And what you don't see is the children are all looking at a book. She's reading a book to these children. And I just had to capture this. I walked in, I saw that, and I said, I'm taking your picture, and I did it. And I was just so excited because we know that for children to learn, to, to love, to read, they must be read to. They need to see how you hold a book. And to have these children look at books and point and label their environment and be read to, and have that opportunity to understand the importance of that was very exciting. Now, what's not captured in the picture is there was another mom, a teen mom, in the room. And when I got really excited and I pointed out all the reasons why I was excited to see that, and then I sat down and began to read to a couple of the, the young children. And she watched, and she said, you know, I, I don't read to my child. And she thought it was, you know, like, interesting that you would read to such a young child that doesn't know how to read, that doesn't know what you're doing. And so I was able to take that teachable moment and work with her just as another mom and demonstrate the importance and the value of just sitting in the floor and reading to your child. And so we're really excited about those opportunities that we have in the program. Additionally, we will move forward with licensure through the Department of Children and Families because we know that's important as a childcare facility and with our partnership with the Early Learning, excuse me, Early Learning Coalition. We also will work towards the accreditation through the National Association for the Education of Young Children, NACY. And that, again, is just another piece of what we think is important to have an exemplary program where not only are our children taken care of, but we know that they are, it's licensed, it's accredited, it's a quality early childcare facility that you'll hear more about in just a moment. We also will continue to help model those healthy relationships and attachments and things that don't always come naturally for all parents. And we think that that's critical, that they learn that in this environment. What you may find interesting, and some folks don't know, is not only do our students generate FTE during the October and the February FTE count, but our babies generate FTE as well. So they're, they need to be in attendance, they're counted, and they generate funding through FTE counts in October and February, just like our students do. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Vianello to talk about some of the exciting things that will happen as we transition over to the MTI campus.
So, good evening. Two, two main points that I'd like to summarize here that I thought were, were very, very important. We've got a, a group of students here that aren't coming to school, and we got a group of students that aren't graduating. So we have a relevancy problem. We have students who are not engaged in the curriculum that we're, we're providing. I want to make three points here. The, the first is by moving our students off of the MTC campus, yeah, by moving our students off of the MTC campus and moving the program over to the MTI campus, now what we've done is we, we've taken our, our, our parents, our YPP students, and we have the ability to connect them to the nine programs at MTI. Over at MTC, they could, they could see the candy, they could see the career prep programs, but they weren't age-eligible to participate in them. So by moving this program over to MTI, now our, our, our parents, our students can now engage in the nine programs that they are most interested in. We have transportation, thanks to Mrs. Roar. Where did she go? Those tape, thanks to Mrs. Roar. And Teresa, you'll be happy to know that we are using existing transportation routes, so this isn't costing the district any additional dollars. So our students will, they can choose a program, and the program that they get connected to when they return to their base school the following year, they'll have the opportunity, because now we're providing transportation to MTI, to continue the program and become a program completer. So they'll have the opportunity to get nationally-recognized certification, and they'll get the opportunity to earn college credit while they're at MTI. So if they're, upon graduation of high school, if their career goals, if their, if their family needs are such, so that they need to have immediate employment, they'll have a career path and the credentials that can get them started on that. If they would like to continue their education, they'll have the opportunity to do that as well. So that is the MT, the, the, the YPP parents connecting to MTI. By moving the program over, we're now gonna have the opportunity to connect MTI to the YPP program. So starting next August, MTI will open up an early childhood education program. We currently have only one of these sites in the district, and that's at the Non-High School. So all the other six high schools now, students who are interested in pursuing a potential career in early childhood will be able to take their academics at their base school, get on a, a transportation, come over to the MTI campus, enroll into the, the early childhood education program, and connect to the infants in the YPP program. So they'll have the opportunity, our students will have the opportunity to earn certifications. They'll have the opportunity to earn college credit. And then they'll have a laboratory, a first-class laboratory where they can go in and interact and learn with the infant. So this is a win for the infants, it's a win for the parents, and it's a win for the students who are studying this as a potential career path. So that's relevance of our students and, and to, for our parents. What we talk about in, in CTE is relevance to our community as well. So I, I've got, we've got our, our good friend right behind me here to my right, Ms. Brenda Christman. And Brenda works for Career Source. I had two meetings with Brenda today. I think if there's a week that goes by that I don't have at least three or four meetings with Brenda, it's not a good week for me. So Mrs. Christman's gonna come here and talk about the relevancy of this, the YPP program or the early childhood program to our community.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Mark asked me to kind of give a snapshot of the occupational opportunities for the childcare worker. And I know this slide is a little difficult to read and everything, and it's certainly available if you need this in, in a presentation. But we did a review in the second quarter of this year to find out how many individuals are employed in the childcare area. And so in the second quarter, which had been April through June, there are presently one thousand ninety-six individuals that are working in the childcare area, in a childcare center, whether it be a private individual, working for a, a family, working in a daycare center, a hospital, whatever. But there are over a thousand individual job opportunities today in that field. And what, that opportunity, if these students come out of that program, there certainly is a career path, there's an employment opportunity for them to walk in and get a job right away. The average wage, if you can see on the bottom-left side of it in red, the average wage for these students coming out, or these individuals who have played to the program and received their certification, is twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, that may not sound like a lot of money, but it is more than minimum wage. Those individuals are stepping out with that training. Minimum wage today is eight-ten, and it'd be eight-twenty-five in January. But these individuals making that much money would be starting out at an average wage of ten dollars and forty-eight cents. This is a nice way to get started. And what that is, is just what I said, it is a starting career opportunity for them. Again, very difficult to read, but what you have here is laid out in the childcare area, the childcare positions, the type of job opportunities are in there, from everywhere, from the number of, the snapshot shows there are six-hundred-and-fifty-two individuals actually working in daycare facilities, with the rest of them being childcare, private schools, elementary schools, churches, civic organizations, and things of that nature. So there is, you can see, a very, very large opportunity for the individual to start their career path and work in the childcare field. If you go on to see that, with those skills, once those individuals work in that area, they gain a lot of additional skills and understanding, and they have a lot of transferable skills that lead of an opportunity. So while those individuals may be making only ten dollars and forty-eight cents an hour, there's opportunities for them to work their way up. And to either many of individuals end up owning, you know, opening their own daycare center and being directors or opening their own business. And if you see on there, for a childcare center director owning, owner, the average annual. annual salary is $52,000, which is very good. Obviously, it's a, a lot of commitment and time, but there, you can see as you go down there, as these individuals progress and choose to take additional training and certifications, the opportunities for preschool teachers, elementary, and it even leads into the healthcare field, because these, these individuals have those transferable skills. So this information just shares with you the opportunity that is there, that there are numerous, numerous career opportunities for them in the area. So certainly would be glad to answer any questions, but that kind of gives you a quick snapshot of what's available in our area. Thank you.
I promise I'm not going to talk more. I'm just going to introduce Ms. Lori Lynn Bowie, who is a coordinator in my department, and she's brought in a couple of community members to speak for just a moment.
Thank you. As we know, our community partnerships are an integral part of our program and the success of our program. I'd like to invite Ms. Roseanne Frick, CEO of the Early Learning Coalition for Marion County, to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to be here, and as has just been demonstrated to you, there certainly are opportunities in early childhood. Not only are there opportunities, there are needs. Last week, at the FLECY Conference, which is the Florida Association for Education of Young Children, in Orlando, and I apologize, I'm fighting a cold, so bear with me, in Orlando, one of the topics was recruitment and retainment of qualified staff. The key is qualified. Through this program, the opportunities for students to graduate, to finish school with a certification that allows them to take the next steps, either as far as additional education is concerned, or right into the workforce, is going to certainly benefit our community a great deal. So, we certainly are excited about this opportunity and working with the superintendent and the board as we move forward. Thank you.
Next, I would like to ask Diane Schofield. She is the founder and CEO of Hands of Mercy Everywhere, which is what home stands for.
Good evening, and thank you. I don't know how many of you are familiar with what we have in Bellevue. Hands of Mercy Everywhere is a teen mother's home that, over the last 14 and a half years, has helped 900 teen mothers and babies. We can look at stats all day long of what happens with teen pregnancy, and guess what? It's always there. And even if it's 50 kids we need to help, that's what this community is about. At Hands of Mercy, they can live there, we take them to school, we do life skills with them. The, the average stay is usually about two years for three-quarters of the children there, and then the other ones come and go a little bit if they can be put and reunited with their families. So with the YPP program, as their stats indicate for you, the program started to slump off a little bit. We saw some real needs as far as transportation, quality daycare classes that the students were getting that would enable them to continue on in their education. So when we met with their staff and Dr. Absher, I can't even tell you how important this is to the youth in our community, because by the numbers that you have right now, those are just the numbers we have. There are a lot of teen moms out there that are not going to school at all. One of the things in Tallahassee that we were discussing at a Florida Children's Coalition Conference last week was we're not looking at everything that's involved with this when we kind of turn our heads the other way for teen pregnancy. We're not realizing that through their education and through graduation, we could help reduce the occurrences of DJJ things that are going on in our juvenile justice systems. They would have more of a willingness to go to counseling and discuss trauma that's happening with them if they're in school and they have people to talk to, counselors that they're offering through this program. It would also, and we've seen this for 15 years, when they go to school and have a group of young ladies that are going through the same things they are, the chances of them getting pregnant again are reduced, because now they become kind of like a sorority, a sisterhood of motivating each other and moving forward. And the other thing that we really need to look at is very often teen mothers will do anything they need to, to support their child, and we don't want to see that trend of prostitution or sex trafficking in our community. We have a wonderful independent living program here where we help transition young mothers and their babies into adulthood. We're currently working on a hospitality grant to get them working and, working in, in restaurants in the community while they do their education, so I'm hoping that you'll support this program.
Last, absolutely not least, is Ms. Smokey West, one of our 2016-17 Golden Apple Teachers of the Year, our teacher for our Young Parent Program.
Good evening, Board. Sorry, they asked me to bring this, you know, be a general reminder. I had the privilege to be a part of the program from January of 1994 until June of 1995. We were housed at the Phoenix Center. It was very rough, because we were mixed with the behavior kids, and they did manage to transition the program, which was great, but the program really was important because of the teachers that were there. They had great curriculum, they had amazing staff who were always encouraging us, who were propelling us to move forward and move beyond those statistics. They, the big thing was really that childcare voucher. Without that, I wouldn't have been able to graduate high school. I graduated from Laker High School in 1996 with high honors. I couldn't have done that without the Young Parent Program. I would not be achieving my doctorate of Business Administration. I would not have achieved any of those things, to be Golden Apple Teacher, to be the mother that I am, the wife that I am. I wouldn't have one right now that's sitting at Navy Basic Training at 17, who graduated a year early from high school. We have always pushed for our children in the program to help their children rise above. Most of the girls I graduated with, their kids are not teen parents. Most of them have gone to college, they've taken care of those CTE classes, they moved above and beyond, so it's wonderful. But if it wasn't for Ms. McClellan, who started the program in '89, Ms. Fuller, Ms. Cosner, and especially Ms. Metzger, and the other daycare staff, I wouldn't have gotten this far. They made sure that every student was reached out to. I've carried on that tradition. I still speak to my students at least once a week. Every time they have a problem, they're reaching out to me. Believe me, I'm at the hospital more than I probably am home. My poor husband. I have a frequent flyer miles to the different hospitals. But I couldn't imagine the opportunities that I would have had in my life and for my children without this program. And it, I, yeah, I had a great, amazingly supportive family, but we couldn't have afforded daycare. I had that opportunity to finish my education because of that childcare voucher, and because of those teachers that were constantly encouraging me. There was a stigma when I went back to my base school, and it was hard. I felt alone, because there wasn't many of the other girls that came back. Many of them still decided to drop out. So when I would fall into those times of stress, or frustration, or not knowing what to do, I would lean upon my Young Parent Program friends. And it was because of them, and because of the staff members, and because of the faculty that I've done as much as I have. It is a stigma to be a teen mom. You go into a job interview, they look at your age, or they look at you, and you mention that you have a young baby, you're not getting hired, sadly. And I see it every day. You don't get the same medical care when you're a teen parent, all these things, but guess what? The more that we work with our community, the better that it is. And when our kids have problems, we're the first to be there at bat for them. We want to make their lives and their children's lives better. I run into people randomly, I go pick up clothes for the babies, and, because, you know, things are tight. And as I'm picking up things, I'm running into parents that graduated from the program and only finished high school because they went to Young Parent. They range between 17 and 46 years old. So obviously, we're impacting future generations each and every day. I am lucky, because I'm only a small part of this legacy, and the impact that this program has had on our community. Many of our graduates and students that have gone on, they're working in the school system. They have children in the school system. They have children who are graduating from college and coming back and reinvesting. And today, one of my girls that decided not to graduate early came in and told me she's graduating on Thursday night from MTC with her phlebotomy certification. She doesn't even have her high school diploma yet, but she has phlebotomy. We're impacting our kids to make better choices. We're trying to encourage them to have a better life, and we know this change is, is hard, but we're doing what we can to make what's best for our future and for our future children. And we don't want them to necessarily come back with baby number two, three, or four, goodness knows, although that does generate more FTE when we have more kids in the district. But we want them to be educated, we want them to be good parents, we want them to be raising their children, loving their children, teaching them literacy, and moving them forward in the future. That's the important thing. That's what matters at the end of every day, that our kids are graduating and their babies are being successful and good students for us in the future.
And if you didn't notice, this is Smokey and her baby when she was in the program, and of course, here she is today. Thank you for speaking. Thank you all for listening to our excitement and our enthusiasm about the things that, that we know are very important, and we look forward to coming back and reporting how things are going over the, the months, and I'm reporting a higher attendance and a higher graduation rate, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now ask the school board attorneys to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. Completed forms were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's assistant. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time, however, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Okay.
And usually, now announcing, give them to you.
Well, okay, I'm just concerned about what they're talking about.
I see if we want to talk about what happened at Anthony.
It's a personal issue.
Well, they still can talk about it.
It's a personal issue.
Is it closed?
Mm-hmm.
Has any appeal time passed?
There's no appeal, is it?
If this is over...
Well, they still can speak.
If it's over, they can say.
Yeah.
Why is this?
Okay, go ahead.
It's over.
They still can talk about it.
They can still talk about it.
Good evening, Board. Hope everybody's doing well. I know it's been a very exciting, it's been exciting since I've been here, it's been a long time.
Sir, could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The name is Howard Gunn, Jr., 2801 Southwest 15th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34474.
Thank you.
Again, good evening, everyone. I have a concern with the way that Mrs. McCoy was demoted, and I need some clarity on it. I know her, I know that she's a, a real good teacher, a principal. I don't, I'm limited in my knowledge of her, that is, the way that things were done, the process, the process or the procedures that was, that led to her demotion. Can someone explain that, please?
Not at this time.
Why isn't it at this time? Why can't it be talked about at this time?
You can make your comments, but the board does not have to answer any questions.
I'm here, I'm here for questions. I, I don't know, I'm here, I'm limited in what was stated in the paper, and I'm just asking for some clarity.
Administration can take your name and number, and if you want, somebody can call you. I mean, if the board wishes to discuss it, that's fine, but they, they're not obligated to answer any questions.
My thing is that, let me just jump into it for a minute. I know there's been some concerns about the situation at Anthony.
You're correct.
Okay, and I know, I, I see two people out there that have called and they asked me questions. I can't answer questions because I don't know anything. So, they're coming to, in front of this board, because they want to know what happened, why it happened, and when it happened, and where it happened, and what's the...
Process, procedures. Will she be returning to her school, or is there a possibility for her to be rehabilitated? That's the right word? How does it work? How does the system work when it comes to an annual contract employee that has been demoted, salaries remain the same, on special assignment to another school, over infraction with the DCF? Was there any way that that could have been rectified, or did it have to be so drastic or severe? Is that the policy?
I don't have the answer to that, sir.
Where would I find the answers? How would the public be notified of the answers?
We need to have him ask some questions to somebody that's knowledgeable about the situation.
But who would that be?
Do you want us to answer now, or do you want us to make a phone call?
Well, I would like them to know that somebody would, that he would have somebody that he could talk to about the situation.
Absolutely. We can have him call Ms. Oliver, we can speak now if you wish, or we can have Ms. Oliver call him tomorrow, that would be...
Ms. Oliver is in the back of the room?
Mm-hmm. With Ms. Cohen, who performed the investigation detail.
Would that suffice if we have somebody that's knowledgeable about the situation get in touch with you?
Would, it would be fine that happened, but the community is larger than myself, so why can the public find out? It's not a thing that I need particularly, but couldn't it be something publicly shared?
Thank you for your contract, Mr. Gunn. Thank you for coming over here, and I know you've been with the Marion County for a long time.
I have. Worked in the school system and...
And I know if, we don't know if there may be a hearing or anything, so we can't talk about any information, so we don't know, we don't know.
I think that, I think...
Go ahead, Ms. D.
I, I think the best thing is, is Ms. Oliver and Ms. Cohen possibly meet with you about the situation. The board is not knowledgeable about the entire situation, so...
This happened November the 7th, and the board is not knowledgeable of what went on?
That is correct.
Okay, what I'm hearing, though, more than anything else, is he's asking for information on what happened, why it happened, when it happened.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it seems like we ought to be able to answer that question.
I think so.
Okay, what I'm hearing, though, more than anything else, is he's asking for information on what happened, why it happened, when it happened.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it seems like we ought to be able to answer that question.
I think so.
Dr. Hamm?
For the benefit of those asking the question, I'm Dr. Robert, and I'm a student of operation. The situation that you're referring to is a, an administrative decision made by the superintendent to move an administrator from one position to another position, as is part of her job description. Whether that did or did not arise from a disciplinary action is, with all respect to the individuals involved, not normally discussed in open form at a board meeting. And let, let me explain. Any disciplinary action taken against an employee of the district is subject to an appeal if there's been a loss. And the appellate group would be the board members. And it's for that reason that, and, and this happens maybe a dozen times a year, when we put someone on paid administrative leave while we investigate. The gentleman referred to a November date. And of course, since that November date, we've had an intervening holiday period with a week off. But we do due diligence to investigate situations and come to the right conclusion and then take actions. So I don't believe it's fair to the individual involved or those making the decision to air that here when, as board members, you, you may at some point sit in, in an appellate situation or recuse yourselves from an appellate situation if you have information that, that would justify that. And we, in all of our public comment about employees, we generally do not discuss individuals to be fair to them. Now, I will tell you that there, there has been a public records request filed by the media, and that has been satisfied. And we have no control over what the media publishes once they have seen a copy of the investigative report. And I understand that others in the room may also have requested a copy of the investigative report. But I, personally, I don't think this is the appropriate forum to have that discussion.
And neither do I. And I think that, Ms. Oliver and Ms. Cohen, if you would please reach out to Mr. Gunn, I would greatly appreciate that. We have one more speaker on the same subject, so I'm not.
Lizzy Lennon.
Is it different than what Mr. Gunn was requesting, ma'am?
No, it's basically the same thing. I have questions.
Can you please state your name and address?
My name is Lizzy G. Lennon. I live 5907 Northwest 27th Place, Ocala, Florida, 34482. Yeah, I had a question similar to Mr. Gunn because of the article I had read in the paper. And it says something about the concerns regarding a judgmental call. And I, I just wanted to, some clarification on judgmental call. I mean, I'm not in the school system. I'm a retired pediatric nurse practitioner. I worked for the state for 35 years. So if I can get some clarification on judgmental call, what do you mean about that? Could somebody give a definition of that? Give me some clarification on, what, what do you mean by the judgmental call?
Again, I would ask Ms. Cohen and Ms. Oliver to address that question.
And with the investigation that was going on, has that been completed? Do you have the results of that?
The investigation has been completed.
Can you give me some clarification on that? Or do I have to wait to read it in the paper again?
Can I ask Ms. Oliver to come up? Ms. Cohen? Ms. Oliver? And Ms. Cohen?
As a concerned citizen, I feel like I have a right to know. I pay taxes in Marion County, and I just feel like I need to have some clarification as to what's going on with some of the employees at the school board. I pay taxes to support the school board. And I just feel like, you know, I should be able to get some clarification on that.
I'm going to ask Ms. Oliver and Ms. Cohen, would you please address? Whichever one.
I just want to say that certainly she does have a right to know, and the investigation is closed. As the board more than likely knows, when we are looking into a complaint or an allegation, we cannot share details in regard to the investigation itself. However, once it is closed, and it is considered closed, once we speak with the alleged accused and we let them know the findings and the recommendation of the superintendent, then it is considered closed. And at that point, a community member may go ahead and request the document, the investigative document, through our public relations office by contacting Kevin Christian. And I can certainly facilitate that when I speak to both of these community members in regard to this situation. We can facilitate that through Kevin Christian's office if they would like the, a copy of the investigative report.
Thank you. And both of you will reach out. Ms. Cohen, do you have?
Yes, I was going to say, Mrs. McCall, per your request, we will be more than willing to meet with Mr. Gunn, if that is your desire.
And with Ms. Lennox as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, y'all will be meeting with them, but, but this decision has already been made, is that correct?
That is correct. We would perhaps be able to give them any clarification that we may have concerning the investigative report and to review how we, in fact, came to the conclusion that we came to.
But the, when y'all review all that stuff, the decision is still the superintendent's decision.
The final decision is always the decision of the superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gunn, Ms. Lennox, will that satisfy your needs at this time?
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Why the superintendent can't tell us she made the decision? She can't tell us the results? She's not allowed to do that?
I would prefer that our human resource department meet with you. They have, they have the decision based on the investigation.
How about if after you meet with Ms. Cohen and Ms. Oliver, if you are not satisfied with what they've shared with you, then reach out. They'll give you my admin assistance contact, and I'd be pleased to meet with you.
Will that work? Thank you very much. Are there any others? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items C. 10.1 through C. 20.2, with the exception of item C. 11.3, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes four to zero. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $88,439.53? $4,800 to Bellevue Middle School from the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Dr. N. H. Jones Elementary from their business partner, Dr. Quinn Family Dentistry, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,500 to Evergreen Elementary School from their business partner, Kiwanis Club of Ocala, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Evergreen Elementary School from Louise M. Werner. $2,500 to Forest High School from the Harvey L. Young Family Foundation, Inc. $4,590 to Forest High School from the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Horizon Academy from their business partner, E. One, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Horizon Academy from their business partner, E. One, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Howard Middle School from business partner Cox Communication, via the Public Education Foundation. $42,000 to Marion County Public Schools Family School and Community Engagement Department from Monroe Regional Medical Health System, Inc. $2,500 to Marion Technical College from Jenkins Auto Group. $4,239.53 to North Marion High School from the Public Education Foundation. $1,800 to North Marion Middle School from an anonymous donor. $2,500 to Oak Crest Elementary School from their business partner Cox Communication, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Shady Hill Elementary School from Dr. John M. $2,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Ocala Orthopedic Group, P.A., via the Public Education Foundation. $1,500 to Vanguard High School from B. Three R Promotions, LLC. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Adena Springs Farm. $5,000 to Vanguard High School from the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Westport High School from Total Site Construction, LLC. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, like sign. Vote passes four to one. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January 4th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the ad valorem millage referendum, instructional calendar, professional development days, bus purchases, district property buildings, and to receive updates on foundations and the interlocal agreement regarding Dr. N. H. Jones' playground. With that, I will start with Ms. Stacy for your board concerns.
Okay.
And comments.
All right. As we're moving into the new year, there are a lot of new things that'll be happening. I was quite disappointed when I requested a workshop for two topics, a board meeting or two ago. And I was asked for as prompt as possible. One of them I did get. The other one was moved back to May. I'm not real sure why it was pushed back as far as May, but talking about politics, superintendent. I can say ditto to your comments at the beginning of the meeting. Honestly, when I look at this, this appointed superintendent issue, there really isn't a lot to workshop, except basically the referendum date, because we all are quite familiar with what this referendum would be about. It's not about us, it's about the people's decision. And so we would need to discuss that date. And I'm going to talk about moving forward with this. And I have spoken to our school board attorney to see if we could move this, this, maybe this vote to the school board up. I would be interested in moving it, maybe the vote from the school board to come the last meeting in January, which I believe is January the 23rd. So I'm really ready to change my request from a workshop to a board meeting with this information. If I can gain some consensus tonight, that we would be ready to vote on this. There's really not a lot to discuss, except the referendum date. And we're going to be talking about a referendum date on January the 4th, I believe, at the workshop for the ad valorem tax referendum. And we could discuss the referendum date for the appointed superintendent at the same time, because all we do is the super, I spoke with the school board attorney, I've spoken to some other districts. A very simple resolution is put together that the board votes on, and we just add a date to it. And it's, it's a very simple thing. There's not really a reason to have a workshop about this. If we, we've done this before, we know what it is. So for consensus purposes, to see if the school board would be interested in putting it on the actual board meeting to go ahead and vote on this. Mr. Attorney, could you get the resolution ready for a vote at that time?
Have it ready by the second meeting in January, yeah.
Okay. So for consensus purposes, I would like to, do I need to maybe make a motion?
A motion.
Make a motion to see if the school board wants to vote on, a consensus vote? I'd like to make a motion that we place the, the referendum vote for the appointed superintendent on the January 23rd workshop, I mean, school board meeting, and go ahead and vote on this and, and get it moving and get it on move to the superintendent, to the county commission, because it takes a little bit of time. So I make a motion that we, and you would need my exact motion. I make a motion that we move forward and direct, ask Ms. McCall if she will place this on the January 23rd school board meeting so that we can go ahead and vote on our decision to place a referendum on the ballot for the appointed superintendent. So I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Shall we call for the vote?
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? No, we would, it would go on the ballot for the end of January.
You can't vote. Right now, she's just getting direction.
Just getting direction to go ahead and put it on the ballot.
I'll prepare the resolution if that's the board's decision.
Put it at the board meeting.
And vote on it at a future hearing date.
It would be the last board meeting of January to go ahead and get this resolved.
Okay. I have a concern.
Okay.
Because we, we need to be pushing the referendum to continue with the millage. And my concern is, do we want to have two things going on at once? And, and I have a concern about that.
Well, we can have two things going on at once. One's on the referendum and one's on the appointed superintendent. I think it's two completely different issues.
It is. But we'll be talking about both, and I, I don't want to take the importance away from the referendum. The constitutional amendments are going to have that. That is definitely going to be one of the constitutional amendments.
Not definitely. It is not definite at all yet.
Okay, now, what I've heard more than anything else is that she want to put it on the agenda for us to vote on it. Is that's correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't see a problem with that. If we got some other issues that we need to discuss, we'll discuss it at this time, at the time. I am seeing, what I'm hearing is that she want to put it on the agenda for us to vote on it. So why not? I, I heard what you said, but I'm hearing this thing as that we need to, she's asked to put it on the agenda.
I don't really see why the connection between the referendum for the ad valorem tax, because we could go on, we could think of an excuse every two years to not do this. But that, I mean, you know, we're always going to be having the referendum vote, it's always going to be coming up. And so this is something that's been going, it's, we're the second largest district in the nation to even have an elected superintendent on an institution this large.
I'm not saying I disagree, but I'm just, I'm concerned about.
I, I don't believe that we can let fear keep us from doing what we need to do.
It's not fear, it's a concern that will water down the referendum.
I don't believe that it'll have a thing to do with the referendum.
I'm, you know, I'm, okay, I understand what you're saying. And every, for every second that I think, I agree with you. Then I also think about the piece, the people to be voted, to be able to vote. So, but I really say, let's have a meeting, let's talk about it.
How soon can we get it on a workshop?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we could talk about it at January 4th when we're talking about the ad valorem millage. Is it too late for January 4th?
Okay, but we have something on the board right now.
Yeah, we do, we do, and we need to call for the, call for the question. And I don't have a problem with putting it on the agenda for a vote.
And we could discuss it then. We can discuss it that night, as far as that goes. And if people don't want to do it, they just don't want to do it.
That's fine.
But we could put it on the January 23rd vote, and we could have some discussion about it at the January 4th workshop. But we could go ahead and place it on the, on the school board meeting agenda and get this moving forward.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Would you like to do that?
So we have a motion and a second, so all the...
To place it on the ballot, I mean, to place it on the...
To place it on the...
January 23rd.
January 23rd agenda as a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, we can go ahead and then we can discuss it at the January 4th. Mr. James?
Okay. Let me say this before I get into this. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and all that, because it's always nice that this end, when we have this portion of the school year, to say those things and make everybody know that this is some goodwill somewhere. And I just want to say that. But let me just say this now. I sat through some stuff again tonight I didn't particularly like, and so you need to know that. I'm going to speak for all the employees. What I heard, what I heard and saw tonight was a message to all the employees out there, because this is, to me, this would be a scary place to work. One place, one time you're in a place, somebody make a visit and you disappear for a month, a article appear in the paper, then you reappear at a lesser position. This is not the first time that I've seen people disappear. And when I say disappear, they move somewhere. And you say that's the power of the superintendent. I have no problem with the power of the superintendent. The issue that I have is I want common courtesy. When people are doing things, are saying things to people out there in the community, at least give me the courtesy of saying, this is what I'm doing and this is why I'm doing it. And when a person called me, then I can say, this is what I've, this is what I've been told, and this is what has happened. I like common courtesy. And when I thought, talking about common courtesy, I want some trust with that. I got to believe in what you're doing. First thing I heard is said, let's get on the trust mobile. Let's get some trust going. I got people out there that want to know what happened. Why did this person disappear? What were some of the words? When, where, and how? That's not that bad. Let me tell you another little issue. I want to know stuff before I read it in the paper or before a parent call me. I'm going to give you an example. There's a flooding out at Dunell Middle School. Some pipes broke, water broke, health department called, mold there. Are y'all aware of the board, are y'all aware of that? You see, these are the things that bother me. It's when I get a call and I can't say, well, I don't know anything about it. But I do know that some pipes broke out there, the administrative suite was underwater or whatever for a day, but did we get any information on that? Is it one of those things that I got to, I got to get Joe Callahan to go out there and investigate the look of? See, these are the things that bother me. And when I sit here and people come to this board and they can't get an answer, then that make me think that every employee out there should be concerned, because they can't breathe because they think they're going to disappear. And there's people disappearing in this organization, whether y'all know it or not. And I don't know whether you people know that, but there's a lot of people that come down to this county office and then they just disappear. And this bothers me tremendously. And as a person that's been around for a long time, and some of you guys that have been sitting here know that some things is just common courtesy. Don't sandbag me. Don't let me walk in here and a parent call and say, what happened to the lady out at Anthony? Why is there water and mold floating around on the floor out at Dunell? And I'm saying, whoa, what's going on? You see, these are the things that bother me. And now, everything that we talked about, it made me think that we are moving in the right direction, but guys, I'm telling you, there's something wrong with this vote here. And this is what my concern is, and I just hope all of you understand why I'm saying it. Just like I hope, I hope Mr. Gunn and Ms. Leonard, I saw Novella, I tell y'all get some answers. And I hope y'all get some answers that match up with what we've done in the past, and that we have some really good communication about what has happened here. Because I know that, from the paper now, that this person, something happened on the 16th, on November 6th, I don't know whether it was November 6th. No, 7th or whatever, and that, and she disappeared until a paper showed up, and about a week later she reappeared as an assistant principal somewhere. You see, this kind of stuff bothers me. Okay, I'm through.
Ms. Boynton?
Yeah, Bobby, thank you for what you just said, and you're right. There are two things that I want to say first. Merry Christmas. I had two, I live in FSVA, and there was so information that I got, you know, and one I would like for both of you like to have, one is Mission Impossible. And that's about a very sexual turnaround for some of the students. So I want to make sure to get this information, how they did it, and let's see what Karen is in. But anyway, I will make sure you have this. I can send it to you right from my website. And there also was information on the HP 7069, where you know the CAS, for that CAS, and I want to make sure that information over to you all too, so you can understand what's going on.
I don't know what's going on. I'm deeply involved in that.
Well, I know you're deep, me deep, but I wanted to make sure that you know...
I can hear what y'all are saying is going on.
What we're saying, okay? Thank you, okay, but I'll send it to you all. Is that okay, Mr.? Is the information that we got from...
If you want, you can send it to me and I'll make sure it goes out there, right?
Okay, I'll do it, I'll send it over. Okay, thank you. All right. Going back to you. You know, we have students, number one. Always, always you look to students. You understand? And then you have your teachers. If the morale goes so down, and then we look at all this data on our students, what happened to the students? You can't, you have to understand, are you sitting, because they can hear TVs just like we do. You understand that? Ask your deputy, superintendent. Okay? So, I want you to understand what you're doing for our county. Other counties are looking at, they're looking to see what we're doing. Why? You understand that, right? So when you have information, and information, and it goes to the newspaper first, you're ready for it already. You're the one who's ready. And if you're not ready for it, and you don't talk to my lawyer, to the school board lawyer or something, then, and you're ready, and you, everything is done, did you send that to our lawyer? What happened? I mean, did you send him that it's over? Did you do that to him? If you have not, then I have a problem. I have a problem even there. But I'm just going right back to our students. Our students, our teachers, parents, every one of our employees, even on the bus, you got to listen. They hear all kind of different things. Every, because the newspaper board is so big, not so big, they board it really, it's so information, and that information, I want to thank, I want to thank the newspaper. All my life, I never said to the newspaper, thank you, but I am today, for giving us information that we had, we had to know, we need to have the right to know that. I don't want, now, any of our other teachers, information that they, that's going on like that. You call the school board. Call, if you, call any of our school board, that's what we're here for. We are here for that. And if you have any things that the morale is so down, please let us understand. I think you need to understand that we're here for you all, for the students and employees. And I know, Mr., the rest of them understand, we're here for this. We came here on the school board to make sure that you get better for our students, you know? Do all the right things. And also, by law, we have to be able, everything you'll be able to understand what they can understand. They want to be able, all the information, that information, you should be able to understand what the law is. So, I realize you're doing what you have to do, to do, but like I already understand, do you realize you're doing so good, but things are getting better with all of the different that you're looking for? And you know what I always praise on you, right? I want to see a really good book today to bring us up.
You got it, ma'am.
Because you got to do this for the students. You understand?
Oh, I do. Thank you, Ms. Boynton.
Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs? Dr. Mayer?
Ms. Boynton, you didn't mention the parade.
To what?
You didn't mention the parade. Have you thought out from Saturday? So we'll get to the parade, and if you chime in, and Ms. McCall, and I won't talk too much about the parade, so Ms. McCall can share as well. But first, we want to say thank you to Officer Berry. Thanks for being here tonight, thanks for coming back. All right, and we're going to wish everybody Merry Christmas, but Merry Christmas to you, Merry Christmas to you. We'll talk about the parade in just a minute, but I do want to assure everybody that the district office has no closet like Narnia, and people just don't disappear. So I just want to rest assure everybody about that. And to go back to the fact that trust is a two-way street, and regardless of the continued personal emails and text messages, I will stay firm in the fact, and you said it quite clearly, ma'am, that students are first. And while, again, we will move forward with continued improved communication, in this instance, I do not apologize for holding details close to the vest, as we completed a thorough investigation by Ms. Cohen, and when it deals with student safety, I do not apologize, although I do understand your perspective, and we will move forward, and we will continue to try to rebuild trust, and I hope that goes for both sides of this instance. I'll pass on this one. I do want to share some emails of happy, like Ms. Boston Ellis said before, happiness. This one got, we received it in between board meetings, so it's a bit delayed, but we were congratulated. Our Vanguard High School Navy Junior ROTC Unit got a big thank you from the Druid Hills United Methodist Church for their professionalism and their help with their pumpkin patch. So we want to say thank you to them, and just again, great things are happening, and our kids are making great things happen. On Saturday, December 2nd, the Sunrise Chorus, the Marion Oaks Choir, and the Sunrise Dance Team, and they were in the parade, little snowmen, were at the Marion Oaks Community Center, and we received an email from Carrie Coats, who is the coordinator there, thanking not only the students, but Ms. Blincorn, Ms. Newman, and Ms. Demombren, and Mr. Eason for being there, and they can't wait to have them back. So that was exciting, and again, our kids are out doing great things in our community. The last email of happy, we want to say congratulations to you, Ms. Boynton, because I understand that you have been put on the nominating committee for the Florida School Board Association. So we got that, and so thank you for that, and thanks for representing us at a state level on that organization. Oh, my notes, okay. Today, Kevin and I sat in on a phone call. He had organized this phone call for me to talk with this gentleman, whose name was Dr. Kevin, help me. Doran.
Dr. Il Doron.
Okay. And so, sure, he wanted to talk about the great things that we're doing in Marion County Public Schools, and when we were prepping for it, Dr. Doran is in Israel, and he is the consultant, he has the ear of the Minister of Education in Israel, and they are very interested in the progress that we are making and what we are doing. So we were able to share information with him, and he said to Kevin and I that we, Marion County Public Schools, are on their radar. So they are working with us, and they're going to connect again, and they mentioned the possibility of visiting, so we'll keep you up to date on what happens there. And so having him on the phone, it was a great opportunity to also say to them, Happy Hanukkah, as tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, so we have eight nights, and we want to say Happy Hanukkah to everybody. And, hold on one second. Here we go. The book, Ms. Boynton. And I think you all, I saw the smiles. So you all recognize this? And tonight, a little excerpt from A Charlie Brown Christmas. And it's particularly, particularly special this evening, because of course, we say everybody knows, but everybody knows the background where they are trying to find the perfect Christmas tree. And what they find is something much like this. While Linus and his friends are devastated with the state of this tree, as they continue to talk though, Linus puts his blanket around the bottom of the tree and he says, "I never thought it was such a bad little tree," Linus said, as he wrapped his blanket around the base. "It's not bad at all, really, maybe it just needs a little love." And I think in this season, that's particularly a great message to carry, that sometimes we just need a little love. And Linus shared a message that I would like to share this evening, because when we think about children and students, and we think about the reason we're here. "And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night, and lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you tidings of great joy, which will be to all people; for unto you is born this day, in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord, and this shall be a sign unto you. Ye shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men. Merry Christmas."
Thank you, Dr. Mayer. I just want to wish all of our families and our faculty and staff a wonderful holiday season, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. I want you to take this opportunity with your children. Let's think about math skills as we are baking those cookies and making that candy. Let's think about reading all those wonderful holiday and Christmas stories to our children, and helping them with arts and crafts, and using those motor skills as they're working on Christmas decorations. Stay safe, stay joyful, and have a very, very Merry Christmas.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November 17th, 2017. Ms. Chiuli, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-17-111 with educational services through the remainder of the 2016-17 school year and the entire 2017-18 school year?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD-18-21E, JD-18-21, and JD-18-23 with educational services through the entire 2017-18 school year?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? This motion passed four zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James. Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Meeting is adjourned at 8:39.